I'm going to call to order the town council work session for Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Happy New Year, everybody. It's two forty-five. We're going to begin with a nonprofits grant video presentation.
Hey, thanks for watching. My name is Jeffrey Berger and I'm with the Breckenridge Town Council.
And I'm Kelly Owens, Mayor Pro Tem.
You know, in years past, we were doing this because of COVID six feet apart. Now we can get a little bit closer, which makes it easier for a two-shot. You comfortable with that?
I'd rather be six feet.
It's been said, to whom much is given, much is required, and much has been given to the town of Breckenridge. And that's why we are very happy to give away three hundred thousand dollars in grants to the various nonprofits across the county.
It is really exciting, and that's not the only money we're giving. We also have grants for high school seniors, the Breck Tourism Office, Breck Heritage, and preschools. I think that's it.
Also, one hundred and forty thousand dollars of in-kind services to these same entities that make Breckenridge just a great place to live. Now, let's talk about the various people that we're going to be handing out cash to.
Okay, but first I do want to mention that all of the towns in our and the county are giving money through the nicotine tax to Family Intercultural Resource Center, the Care Clinic, and Building House.
All right, all worthy organizations. So let's check it out. Advocates for Victims of Assault, Bethany Immigration Services, Summit Valley Horse Center, Blue River Watershed Group, Breck Film, Breck Summit Youth Lacrosse, Breckenridge Backstage Theater, Breckenridge Elementary PTSA, Breckenridge Outdoor Education Center, Cafe Food Rescue, CASA of the Continental Divide, Colorado Learning Connections, Education Foundation of the Summit, Family and Intercultural Resource Center, Father Dyer United Methodist Church, Friends of Colorado Avalanche Information Center, High Country Conservation Center, High Country Soccer Association.
High Country Veterans Adventures, Mountain Dreamers, Mountain Scholars, National Repertory Orchestra, Mountaintop Explorium, Northwest Colorado Center for Independence, Open Arms Childcare and Preschool, Summit High School Spirit Squad, Smart Bellies.
Hi, everybody. I'm Margaret.
And I'm Sarah. And we are with Smart Bellies. Smart Bellies is a weekend food program, so we feed a bunch of kids and their families every single week. This week, we are feeding over seven hundred kids and three hundred families, and we couldn't do it without the support from the town of Breckenridge. Thank you, town of Breckenridge.
Summit Nordic Ski Club.
Hi, I'm Olaf Pedberg, the head coach of Summit Nordic Ski Club.
And I'm Derek Hill, one of the coaches at Summit Nordic Ski Club.
We just wanted to say thank you so much to town of Breckenridge for your support over the years, and especially this year. Your grant really helps us make it affordable for the youth in this county to get on skis and learn Nordic skiing.
SOS Outreach, Summit After Prom, Summit Chamber of Commerce, Summit County Youth, Summit County Youth and Family Mountain Mentors, Summit Lost Pet Rescue.
Hi, I'm Melissa Davis.
And I'm Brandon Chula.
We are the directors, co-founders, and mission coordinators.
Of Summit Lost Pet Rescue.
We would like to say thank you to the town of Breckenridge and Breckenridge Town Council for your very generous grant support.
Since we were founded in two thousand and twenty, we have successfully located over four hundred and seventy-six lost pets and reunited them with their families.
We have experienced a high demand and increase in our lost pet rescue services, and without your generous support, we couldn't do without you. We are so grateful, and the families of the lost pets are also grateful. Thank you. It means the world to us.
Thank you so much.
Summit Public Radio and TV, Summit Rotary Charitable Fund Community Dinner, two thousand and twenty-three, Team Breckenridge Sports Club, Team Summit Colorado, The Cycle Effect.
Hi, town of Breckenridge. My name is Paula. I've been part of The Cycle Effect since the sixth grade, and now I'm a sophomore in high school. My older sister first joined The Cycle Effect, and I remember at first not really liking it, only because I was so used to biking with my dad and being able to walk the challenging parts of the trail. But now I'm so happy that I joined The Cycle Effect because it gives me an opportunity to challenge myself and bike with new people. To me, being part of The Cycle Effect means being part of an amazing team of inspiring and talented people that always supports and encourages one another. In four years, there isn't a practice I regret going to. I always feel stronger and more empowered. The most important thing that I've learned is that improving is a process. When I started, I would often rush through challenges and not take the time to learn and grow. Thank you so much for helping the Cycle Effect family continue to grow both on and off the bike.
Timberline Adult Day Services, Youth Entity. And the final two grants of the day are being funded by the Open Space Fund. So you want to tell us about that?
Yes, I'm the council rep on Breckenridge Open Space, and we're happy to hand out some funding and some support to Colorado's fourteen initiatives and FDRD, Friends of Dillon Ranger District, also amazing organization that maintains and enhances our trails.
Yeah, so that's it for today, but we did want to just say we really appreciate our community partners. Giving to the nonprofits is really the best part of the year for all of us, and we are so grateful and lucky to have you.
It was unbelievable. Truly, and I like it better than watching you weirdly don't touch people. It's always weird. You know, I always.
Really good job.
You know what? He can wrangle that guy. He can wrangle. You know, we spend a lot of time doing things up here for the community, but really, the really good work of the community is done by all of these groups that, you know, give their time, give their money, give their effort to make this community what it is. So thank you too for the wonderful presentation. That was awesome. And we're so happy to give this money to these organizations.
Kind of like how they inserted some of the.
That was great. Really cool. So thank you all, and thanks to Dave for being here for the NRL. Obviously, there's nowhere else to go. Okay, we're going to move on. Planning Commission decisions for the third of January, two thousand and twenty-three. Anybody have anything? Anything on this detached shop addition? All right. All right. With that, the planning commission, we move on to legislative review. We have policy five A, five R. This is Architectural Materials Amendment for second reading.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Hello. There were no changes since first reading, but this amendment to policy five A and five R just updates with a new materials matrix, making it very clear the point allocations for different material usages, and it prohibits the use of metal, stucco, or brick in on one hundred, at one hundred percent on any facade except for brick in the case of institutional uses.
Everybody all right with this for second reading? Excellent. Thank you. We have policy twenty-four amendment, housing, second reading.
Yes, on this one also, there have been no changes to first reading, and the purpose of this change is to shift some requirements in regard to deed restrictions from the Development Code into our housing policies where they belong.
Administrative rules and regulations, if someone did want to look them up, where are they housed?
In line. Yes, we're making an effort to put all of the rules and regs online with the codifier, so it's online with where the municipal code is.
Other questions?
All right. Thank you, Lori.
Alcohol takeout and delivery permit required, first reading.
Mayor and council, I think this memo is pretty self-explanatory. The state implemented a state-only permit to allow for alcohol delivery and takeout. As such, we wanted some level of under local understanding when people had these permits, and we are introducing this to code so that we would require a ten-day notice from the businesses receiving this type of permit, so that we're aware that they're operating in this way.
And this is something we have no choice. The state says we have to give it to them.
Correct.
Actually, the state is who issues it, right?
The state issues it. We just like to know that they have it.
Are we, are we running it through the clerk's office, though?
They can turn it into us, yes, and then submit it to the state.
You caught the eye of the Colorado Restaurant Association lobbyist down in Denver.
Oh.
At this agenda item. They called me. What's going on?
It's not really the intent, but sure.
I think it's smart.
This is just. I agree.
They have to let us know ten days before they start driving around with liquor.
Within ten days of receiving the permit, yeah.
Yeah, so we know who they are.
More of it is for takeout, though.
Yeah.
Like almost everybody.
It's kind of a continuation from COVID operations.
It's better for the restaurants and the town, you know, for everybody to know what each other's doing.
Other questions? All right, this is up for first reading, and then we have opioid settlement funds intergovernmental agreement, just by resolution.
So, Mayor and Council, we've provided a memo that describes, as does the resolution and the IGA, the impacts of opioid use in Colorado and in Summit County. And as a reminder, in October of two thousand and twenty-one, you all approved a resolution that allowed the town manager to enter into what's termed the Colorado MOU, and that's an MOU that we entered into with the state that describes how we will utilize and track our settlement funds, and I did provide a link to that in your memo so that you could go back and refresh your memory on that. And now that we have received some of those funds, we got some at the end of two thousand and twenty-two. We've been in touch with Summit County Public Health and believe that the most effective way to use those funds is to engage with public health and combine our funds with Summit County and the town of Frisco to enact programs that will reduce opioid use in our community, particularly the use of fentanyl, which has been particularly horrible and resulted in a number of deaths, both in, well, in Breckenridge and in the surrounding county. So the IGA that is included in the packet details how those funds will be used, how they'll be tracked. We set it up very similarly to the nicotine IGA, and so there would be an advisory board created that would help determine what problems the fund should be used for, and there are reporting requirements of the county so that we can report back to the state on how we are using those funds. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, questions?
Hey, so this is from the Senate. But would you call this federal money or state money?
Well, it's money that's coming from law that goes into the state, and then the state distributes it. And back in two thousand and twenty-one, we had the option to either take those funds in ourselves and decide how to use them or to allow them to go to the regional group, which is more than just Summit County. There's, I think, six or seven counties that's included in that group, and we felt we could do more locally if we kept the money here.
And so this is just kind of an agreement to cooperate with the other entities in the county.
With Summit County Government and the town of Frisco and Silverthorn, sorry, I missed them, not Dillon.
What's Dillon doing?
They've decided to take, they're going to take their funds in and use them themselves. And then the town of Blue River put theirs into the region.
Put theirs where?
Into the regional group. It's not, yeah, it's a small amount of money for them. It's not a huge amount of money for us right now either, and that's why combining, we think, is a better idea. More bang for our buck.
The advisory committee is volunteer, volunteer-based?
It's the managers.
So would the hope is that this money would go, that the advisory committee would direct it towards education, the middle school, high school, you know, maybe an addiction clinic or an offshoot or something like that?
Yeah, it could be marketing, it could be education campaigns. One of the things that public health has brought up is these vending machines that are being used in certain locations now where you can get, you know, test strips and Narcan and other things that, that people who are using substances or might find themselves in a situation where substances are being used, they can use an app to access the vending machine and get the kinds of things that they need.
That's the important kind of information needs to get out there. I mean, I, I find this whole thing to be just horrifying. You know, just having a, having a teenager, it's just, you just worry constantly about, you know, not necessarily the opioid thing at the moment, but the fentanyl thing is just terrible. And Dick and I have talked about it multiple.
No, I mean, black market weed is treated with it. Any drugs, I mean, I tell my staff all the time, it's like, there are no clean drugs anymore.
Yep. You know, I, I found some stuff that turned out to be Roll-Aids when I was bicycling up Wellington, you know, so I called the cops. And, you know, and I said, I don't know what this is, you know, it was in a little baggie, looked like someone tossed it out, and they told me that you can't even touch it. You're not supposed to touch like fentanyl, it goes through the skin and stuff. I had no idea.
Since it's where, not in, in our county necessarily, but where police officers have been seriously injured or incapacitated because they've opened something that contained fentanyl and they didn't know it.
Unbelievable. All right, and that sobering note. Any other questions on this resolution? Okay, Public Projects update. Shannon.
Hello, Mayor and Council. So I included, to start getting us into two thousand and twenty-three, little information about overlay as well as a table showing the construction projects. I'm happy to take questions on any of those or anything else that's coming up for public projects.
Are we moving fast enough on the overlay?
I think with this past year and this coming year with increased budget, we are looking really good.
Because when you go and you look at the map, it looks like there's so much that needs to be taken care of that we're not.
Also, the question of capacity for the contractor.
Yeah, fair enough.
I feel like we're in a good.
Jen, I had a quick question regarding sidewalks. The sidewalk that's heading east between Lincoln and French on the south side of Lincoln is still closed off. Is there a reason why we can't do something to heat that sidewalk or to make sure it's plowed? Or what, what is the problem with that area?
The problem is the building and the people that own the building. We've had multiple discussions now about them heating their roof, and they refuse.
The sidewalk's not the issue. It's the snow coming out the roof.
And there, it's just, it looks like it's a town of Breck. It, it looks poorly on the town, right?
We've had multiple meetings with them. Rick and I have had multiple meetings.
Before John sold that Warner, he tried to, he tried to work out a deal with the other owners to see if they could, would invest the money.
And you know who all of them are. I mean, they're all all-time locals.
When you talk to them, though, I think their concern is if you put the snow rails on there, that then structurally, the roof can't handle the snow.
Well, and they won't put heat tape on because they have to upgrade their panel. But honestly, that's, you know, listen, owning a business in a winter town is, you got to take care of that stuff.
I think they want to push back, and I think some of them think that if they don't do anything, the town eventually will.
Yeah. Maybe we should take another run at having a meeting with them.
Is that condominiumized for all of the people in there?
Yeah, it's all condominiumized.
Maybe we can get like Jeremy and John to take the lead on it.
We had John help, try to help us out the one time. They sort of smacked him down.
Yeah.
Warner or John? Yeah, but now John Elend's in there.
Oh, oh, you know what?
I don't know.
Maybe you can do some of the work.
I mean, if someone fell, it could be a frivolous lawsuit or a lawsuit.
You know, for me, it's less that, and it just makes us, Jay's right, it makes us look like we're not doing our job, so. Why don't we, why don't we see if we can get a meeting with, with Elend and Jeremy? Want to do that?
I would think liability would motivate them, too.
Well, it's not on their property, so it's not. It's the town property. They're just.
Add Bob Gregory.
And I don't know if Steve West still owns.
I'll talk with, we can bring Dr. Factor in, too, and he's, so. Can we try to get something scheduled, Dick and I'll, with you? Appreciate you. Ongoing.
Younger, newer people in there now.
Anything else from the council?
What, remind me, and I don't typically want to, I haven't had time to bet this internally, but I was talking to Eric about this. I'll just tell you that we, in the recently, there are some big expenses that we are looking at at Warriors Mark. There's some drainage issues that are up at the top around Sunrise Point and White Cloud that we, that we're probably going to get stuck with, and it could, could be a million dollars. The bridge, there's a bridge that's got to get replaced, right? And I guess in light of all of this, I have concerns that we're spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to add another few feet of sidewalk to nowhere. You know, that a certain resident was pushing hard for before, and how many feet are we adding? Do you remember?
Two hundred somewhere, and we're extending it to the next bus stop.
Yeah. But I don't know if, I just wonder if there's other priorities in that for us now that might take, I guess, take priority over. You know, we, I don't know that it's solving a big problem. Some people say it does, but it's not like it's running up the hill or all the way down the sidewalk. We're adding another couple hundred feet up there.
Is it currently in our CIP for next year?
The sidewalk is. We pushed it off a year. We were going to do it. This year, maybe.
We're accept, yeah, we're accepting bids on January twenty-third, so then we'll know the final pricing, which what we currently have budgeted likely won't cover it. We had canceled it last year because the contractor came back with a really escalated price that we weren't willing to accept without rebidding.
Soon are those bigger repairs going to need to be done, do we think?
If we have, chances are what we're looking at, we're probably going to be responsible for this. And that'll be this spring, soon. And I throw that out. It could be a big number. I don't know what it is. We haven't studied it yet, and I mean, if, if we do what they want, it's even bigger, but we're pushing back on that, and we're.
I'd like to get both numbers, and I have no problem postponing the sidewalk until we know exactly the apples to apples as far as what it's going to cost and prioritize where we spend tax pay as money.
But there's no connection between the two projects, right? It's just prioritizing.
Correct.
These other ones kind of came out of the blue a little bit and aren't anywhere in our CIP or plan for.
Is that bus stop well utilized, the one that we're talking about putting a sidewalk?
I'd have to check. I don't know what the numbers are unless.
I think a sidewalk at fifty thousand should be a priority. Oh, two hundred. That's our base.
It will probably be more than that is what.
Now I see the.
What we've heard, right? So you can pay for a quarter of the other piece with it. That's the, that's the discussion point.
Warriors Mark's out is a mess.
Is that area well lit enough that it's, even if there's not a proper sidewalk, that? We'd be adding lighting with the proposed project, and it also has a drainage component. That's why it's so expensive. It's not just the concrete with the sidewalk. We have to capture the water, pipe it across the street down to the river. Then we were doing some additional lighting. But I mean, I can bring it back to council before we award, after we accept the bids, if we'd like, as we research this upper Warriors Mark drainage issue as well.
Would like to see what the bids are.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be good, because then we could help prioritize that.
If we do the bids, we're not locked in, right?
We have a certain period of time before we have to award it. It'd be nice to know in your professional opinion whether you think both should be done. We'll see what the pricing is, and in addition to the drainage Rick is speaking of, we have been designing some drainage repairs and fixes to the backside of the broken lands loop. And that's what's listed here, and that project keeps growing in scope as well. So, and to the culvert bridge that we're doing, we're looking at, you know, five to ten million dollars to Warriors Mark in the next three to six years, just infrastructure upgrades.
Will we know the drainage number soon?
For the upper Warriors Mark one?
Well, whatever one was kind of, gonna take money from, possibly take money from them.
One is going to take a while because that's in its infancy. We have to really, I mean, we're, we thought we had a path forward and that the property owners were going to address it, and now the property owners are pushing back and saying it's not their responsibility, and so.
Time, same timeframe as the sidewalk. We'd probably know more like late May, early June, the drainage ones.
We have an annual bus budget.
Other questions on this piece? Thank you. Anything else? Thanks, Shannon. Mobility. Matt.
Oh, Happy New Year, Mayor and Council.
Happy New Year.
Uh, mobility update is in your packet. I'll take any questions you might have.
Matt, question on the ads and the buses. Just how does that work? I know there's a mix of some town materials and then ads. How do we run those?
The, all of the materials are run through, I forgot the name, Teddy, throw it out, you know, Street Media. They do all the in-bus advertising. We, as the town, are allowed to put one or two articles in there throughout the entire year. With the agreement, the ones that we have stuck up with the mayor's challenge are technically not supposed to be in there. So some of them have disappeared recently. Yeah, we see it as a great point. Yeah, right. So that's how it works. They pay us ad revenue for the ads that are placed in there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Matt, on the, the numbers for the bus that I have, you know, have reduced, is that just because you kind of like on the purple, we just changed the, how it's run and kind of didn't start until three forty-five or whatnot is?
Probably not. What we're actually seeing is we are actually running thirty, a little over thirty percent less service hours than we were this time last year. So with the difference from the brown-yellow to only gray this year, we're technically running less service hours. So if we actually did the math, we're actually doing fifteen percent more ridership with the service hours provided.
In, in general, how much is the ridership up for all, all in? Is it fifteen percent?
I mean, this is showing you that we're actually down, so the actual ridership is down, but that's just because we're offering less of a service.
Bus has been packed.
Yeah, it has been packed.
Related, that, that lack of service is related to the driver shortage?
Basically, yes.
You there?
We're, we're working pretty hard on that, but we're not seeing a lot of movement in the pipeline. I think our pay rate is incredibly competitive, and I think we're doing a very good job what we can, but getting people in the door and housing and all that is obviously a hurdle for everybody, so we're not unique as transit.
It just seems like it's getting worse. I mean, nationwide, not for us, but I mean, for everybody, from just reading articles and such.
I would agree. I think that we actually feel better about where we stand in comparison to others, but yeah, you're right. I don't think it's getting easier.
Because I think other areas of employment seem to be recovering, so.
Those are all CDL spots, right? Is there a shift that could be done? Just thinking aloud here, right? Like from a, as we invest in new vehicles to go to smaller non-CDL?
Multiple conversations around that, yeah. It's, it's a challenge. It look and see if there's a way to be creative.
Yeah.
With Negoos's office about it too, that it really does create a problem. And some of the federal requirements for that CDL.
The fact that we drug test, that's, that's.
Yes.
We can't not drug test.
That's what we were just talking about without mentioning drugs.
On traffic counts, um, it's been at least inferred that, you know, with thirty thousand cars going through the tunnel and nineteen to twenty thousand cars going on Tiger Road, that sixty-six percent or two thirds of the uh, cars going through the tunnel are then going through Tiger Road. That's an exaggeration for sure. Is there any? Do you have any measurement or any clue of what percentage of the cars of e- every hundred cars that goes through the tunnel westbound? How many actually are crossing, are going down, you know, across that traffic counter on Tiger Road?
I don't think we could get, I don't think we get down to the nitty gritty of that exact. Um, we could probably figure out a a percentage, but I don't think we would be, you know, we're looking at also Veo Pass coming down from Steamboat could be coming from many places. So um, we could probably get some information. I don't know how strong it would be to help us make any decisions on anything.
But we do, uh, we do look at it as you look at it. Okay, we look in that, we may even see a reduction at the tunnel. But an increase on Tiger, which tells us now a larger percentage of those people are turning off of Frisco, I mean, into Breck. And we've seen that scenario play out over the years as we look at the numbers. Um, so.
I think the one thing that I also had to add in there that, that we're seeing is traffic on uh, coming from uh, south of town is increasing more than it is from the north end of town, so.
But don't, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't we using a different methodology on that? Is it apples to apples from last year to this year on that south side? Like, aren't they new numbers?
No, so if you look at your packet, there's two different charts in blue there. Uh, one of them is the um, River Park Drive, that's the new one, the smaller graph there. That one we're gonna transition to once we get to a full year, which will be in April, uh, we'll transition to that counter. That counter is uh, a lot more reliable than the one that's, has the larger data on the, I guess my, mine's the backside. Um, that one has only data going northbound, and that's not as reliable of a source. Um, where it's placed, the, the one at River Park that is, uh, it's a radar based counter, and it's, it's not like the one at Tiger Road where that, that's in the highway. This one's actually radar based, and it is capturing local traffic coming in and out of River Park Drive. So there's a little bit of a issue there with that, but I, I think once we actually get to a year, we'll be able to understand, you know, we're not really building that much more in the River Park neighborhood right now. Um, and I think that that will, we'll be able to kind of deduct that number of what is local traffic from what's actually in that number, so.
So you're right, it's not apples to apples, and the new information will be accurate, and we can assess that, those changes going forward, and we should be getting an in-the-ground continuous counter this summer.
We have discussed it, where it's kind of up in the air. I think we're, we'll discuss it outside of here, but I think, I think it's, it's pretty cost prohibitive right now to look at doing that whole thing. Um, as a loop counter, but we'll, we can talk more about it.
But that, yeah, we, we should be able to have better numbers than what we've had before, because the system before was just not that, not that good. And then I, I think we'll to the next meeting with um, a presentation from RRC who's been helping us with the capacity analysis. I don't know that that necessarily will answer your question about um, cars from I seventy and cars on Highway nine, but we do have mobility data, which is cellphone data that we can sort of match up to our assumptions to, to start to see whether or not we are actually getting more traffic from I seventy, and then the I seventy coalition also has mobility data, so there may be some opportunities for us to start doing some comparisons with that information.
Lucy's looking a lot of that too.
It's all, you know, the same stuff together.
Do we have any, it's probably more to Shannon, do we have any um leverage as far as like the people from, traffic coming from the south? Kind of change the, the stoplight configuration, like Saturday was backed up almost of the time, tarned. And uh, yeah, and I think it's just because people stopped at the light, or, or maybe not.
Um, well, I think we can certainly ask Public Works to, to take a look at it, talk to Seda about what the timing on the light is.
Because most people go, you know, Highway nine, and then they take a left on Park Avenue, correct? And so, you know, so if they, if we could kind of prioritize that left arrow light, maybe that would.
The problem is that during those busy times, it doesn't matter how the light is timed, there's nowhere for them to go. So, you know, if on a normal day we were seeing that, then I would say we probably should change the timing on the light, but if it's a busy day.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Not you've done to this town. See, under your leadership, all the people that come here.
Being myself the bulldozers for thirty years.
While you're here on the summit stage, last time we talked about the Breck Frisco numbers are way down, but also the Boreas Pass Loop numbers are down almost fifty percent. Do we have any idea? Why?
Well, they're still offering one hour service, so they haven't switched to that. Uh, and it doesn't, I don't foresee that changing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll hang out with Jesse for sustainability.
Excellent.
Right, Mayor, Council, um, this memo this week covered some updates to EV charging. Um, the biggest thing to note is that the fast charger at, uh, at the police department has been postponed, and we're looking at revamping that project um, towards a more fleet specific, um, maybe even a fast level two charger. Um, we had some snafus with the way that the um, bid came back and was specced. So back to the drawing board with PD charging, but the golf course should be up and running um this spring, and then we still have a project for a fast charger at the South Branch Library that's being led by Excel. The dashboard for the Sustainable Breck Plan is up and live. You can see that on the sustainablebreck.com website. Mayor's Challenge is in Week Two for prizes. We've had a couple submissions so far this week. Um, and that is going well. We did have, as Matt said, some of our advertising on the buses came down, so we're working to get that back up again. And then I did want to highlight some work that Parks has been doing to electrify their lawn and, and um, parks equipment. So they um, tested some stuff out this past summer. And um, they have now ordered a backpack blower, handheld blower, push mower and string trimmer um, that will all be fully electric for next year. And I shared with you some reports from um, Co-Prg that showed some of the air quality and pollution aspects of gas powered lawn equipment. So.
Reef blows are egregious.
They're crazy, and they're loud, and they're smelly. So we're looking to clean that up, and Parks is doing a great job of figuring out how to do that. Um, so I'll circle back to pay as you throw, because I know the mayor had an update for everybody.
Yes. Well, yeah, MMC in speaking with um like, it started first off with the county is still a bit annoyed about the letter that we sent, the second letter. And then Nathan. I said, we blamed it on Justin. He did it without any of us knowing. Now I, you know what?
Take it out on Frisco.
Again, you know, they can feel, they can feel whatever they, they feel about it, it's fine. Nathan from Dillon said that one of his residents contacted him because supposedly either Waste or Timberline said that they are not going to be able to do recycling in the rest of the county because of pay as you throw in, in Breck and Frisco. There was no real proof that this letter exists, or if this was a ploy by Waste and Timberline. Phone calls to Waste Management and Timberline have been met with what? From them, that, that's just not true. That letter was never sent. I, I don't know what's going on, but in the, in the midst of this big discussion, the other towns in the county would like if we would take a pause and work on a larger plan for the whole thing. And I said I would bring this to you guys and see how you felt. I talked to Kelly about it. And Kelly suggested we waited till we finally had some pricing moving forward, and maybe that's the point that we need to figure this out. If the pricing isn't what we hope it's gonna be, so.
Well, I, I actually feel more strongly than that, and I do think that we should um, continue on for the pricing sake. Because that's something that's actually been identified as being an issue that might need to be resolved, and the county has said that, you know, they've been consistent with that messaging. And obviously, we want that for our community as well. So that's supposed to be February first, right? That's what's in the ordinance. So I feel like there's just zero reason to change anything without getting the pricing first, um, because I think that will inform a lot of decisions going forward. But having said that, and certainly wanting the whole community countywide to move forward together. I don't really understand, after like seven years of talking about this, what a pause will do. So if there's some, you know, very clear um, priority that they're trying to attain over, you know, some period, then I would be willing to talk about that. But I guess I'm just really thrown by um, you know, we have a very well attended task force that meets consistently, has met consistently since I've been on council at least. And so I guess I'm really confused what um, what would be accomplished by taking that pause? And then the other thing that I really do feel strongly about is that I think there are a lot of growing pains that the other community are going to avoid by letting us continue to move forward. And I think that, you know, Jesse and many other people have really informed the program as it is to roll it out. And I think it's going to be a great program. We know that thousands of communities have already implemented this, so it's not like we're inventing this from scratch. And so I although I'm willing to continue discussing, and of course, we should have meetings and help everyone understand the program, I just don't, I don't support backing down for Breck and Ridge.
And I agree with Kelly. I mean, we vetted this over however many meetings. Our consultant in Sustainable Breck identified this as a clear measure. I mean, it really doesn't make sense to slow down. That being said, in tandem, we should be working community wide on other solutions that um that could advance our goals, but unless there's specific issues that are gonna impact countywide, we don't negatively impact the rest of the county, but I mean, what we're hearing is one rumor um, for Breck and Ridge, we vetted this.
It was, it was one rumor that led to a larger discussion with, with the reason that Silverthorn's not involved. And part of the reason that the county's not involved, and honestly, some of the things that the county is saying now are things that we had never heard. E- even though they had said that, well, we told you this before, this piece about the scrap not being able to handle this stuff is completely, was completely new to me, not at this meeting, but at the meeting before that that we had, was just I, I was taken a, a back that this, the reason the county is not doing it is because the scrap cannot handle.
The other part is if you had less trash going there.
And that's, that's the problem. That's why, that's why the scrap can't handle it, is because they're not gonna make money from the trash. But on the other hand, the scrap is looking at a deadline for being full, so I don't.
And don't forget that the voters already approved this money through Strong Futures and expected that we.
I know, except we're not getting the money from Strong Futures. That, that's not, the county is not giving us a, an open checkbook to use the Strong Futures money for a program that is just Breck and Frisco. That's.
Well, they said they would consider it if the other towns would support.
Consider it if.
And I'm guessing the other towns right now aren't gonna support it.
Yeah, so this is totally different than what we were led to believe as far as that Strong Futures money, so.
Well, I guess my point being that the county should be considering that as their mandate, is that they're supposed to be increasing diversion rates using the Strong Futures funding, and they're not.
Yeah.
I mean, and we've all agreed on the Climate Action Plan, and we have to keep moving forward. Like, we said this during the short term rental discussion, is that this is one piece. It's an important piece. There's lots of, you know, the construction, that's also important, but my understanding is that's like a two-year window. It's a bit, big expenditure or not window timeline. So you know, it's quite a ways out there. This is something that we can do and are already doing. And we have to do these little pieces to make any kind of difference.
I guess Silver, if Silverthorn had their way, they, we, they would do construction debris and composting tomorrow.
They can do composting tomorrow. They did it actually months ago.
Countywide program. Because they feel that's.
Composting program.
But it's not a pickup program.
It does pick it up from centralized locations all over the community.
Or your business is the problem.
That's true.
I mean, that is the problem.
Picked up from your business, you just have to pay them.
Well, yeah, but that's the problem, is that for a lot of people, they can't, a lot of businesses can't afford to have compost picked up and in return get zero benefit on the trash side. And I, I get that. I mean, I understand why, you know, Silverthorn has this gripe about the compost piece. I get it. Their, their whole thing was, can we take a pause and hire a consultant, try to figure the whole ball of wax out? I said I'd bring it to you. I said I don't make the decisions for this group, so.
Hunter from Frisco said, I don't know, we'll talk, but he goes, I'm very supportive of what we're doing.
Yeah, so.
And all those strategies mentioned can be due in tandem with pay as you throw.
No, without a doubt. My, my problem will come February first if the pricing is not is not what it should, we think it should be. And I'm, look, I, from my standpoint, the only the benefit of having everybody involved is because the pricing will be different if everybody's involved. They can cherry pick Breck and, and Frisco with their pricing because they still have the county and the other towns. The haulers can. So I'm skeptical of where we're gonna end up with pricing.
Yeah.
I agree with Kelly. I don't want to pause. Um, but I'll, I'll, we'll talk once we get the pricing, but I think sometimes I don't want to blink.
Yeah. Way more from action and moving forward than waiting.
I agree with, everything's been said.
The county and the fact that they have like this self fulfilling prophecy, whether on, if we don't we don't divert material, then we'll have the money to pave, to divert other material where i- i- that just seems so ass backwards to me, and I'm just disappointed in their, their perspective right now, and um, yeah, more to come and see what happens.
But the message we can take is that we want to expand composting.
Yeah, well, and then I think that the message is that we're, we want to continue with our pricing and those timelines. Nothing is ta, nothing is going into place until later in the year anyway. So we want to be a, we'll be a part of the meetings. Because, you know, they committed to getting together quickly, looking and trying to come up with some sort of some action items, you know, but I, I think we want, you know, we'll be at the table with them and um see what happens. I mean, the, the whole other discussion, which is probably one that's still worth having too, is should we be looking at some sort of a sand district that will allow us to have our countywide trash service for residential pickup? Through some sort of a, you know, create a special district model or something for that.
They do that all over the country.
And that would be part of this larger look at what's going on.
That could be a good job at the council.
I mean, I don't, yeah, it could, you could run that. I don't, I mean, I don't see why we need to pause in order to go down these other roads either.
Yeah, that's.
My worry is, is not.
Yeah, it could be what we evolve into.
My, my worried is not, my worries about the pricing aspect, where we're gonna end up. And not having a united front. That's, that's what concerns me.
Well, I would love to have a united front too, but I also feel like we've had these meetings forever, and I just don't understand what's gonna happen in six months or.
They took great offense to the second letter, and the, the county, the new county manager wants us to play nice, and Hunter and I looked at each other like, it was just a letter. People send us letters all the time. I don't get my hackles up about a letter that's just stating some stuff that we've stated honestly a hundred times before.
Well, and plus, this whole underlying theme of we need to collaborate on this. I'm like, what the hell? This is, we have been doing collaboration for years.
We want to collaborate on it.
It was, it was difficult, but I said I would come to you.
Weren't always as well attended by everybody. Weren't always as well attended by everybody, maybe. And Frisco is gonna, I believe that their council will have the same conversation tonight. My guess is you, it'll be very similar to this, the outcome probably.
Can't speak for the rest of that council either, but yes, I think it'll, I, we'll have the same discussions, yeah.
Get you on the spot. Yeah. All right, that was it. Thank you. Uh, housing childcare.
Well, what, what do you need?
Jesse. Walk, walk backwards while you answer.
On, on these, do, are we monitoring the EV uses um, locations? Like in other words, it just seems like some of our, like, like, do we, is the golf course, is that gonna be a big EV need? Golf course in the Nordic Center? I mean, with the uh, means, could we look at a year from now saying, I know, none of these golfers are using EVs, they're all in escalades.
Yeah, so we have um, we have actually pretty robust reporting for the EV charging stations, which is great. And we can include some of that data in these updates.
Yeah.
Um, I think actually at the golf course, there's a, there's a great audience there. Um, and we can also see in real time, like, the um, the number of units that might be down. We have a couple down right now for head unit replacements, and the supply chain has delayed that replacement a little bit. But we can see all of that, so we can start including that in this update.
I just haven't seen many Chevy bolts at the golf course.
Lots of Teslas though.
Just one other question, uh, while Jeffrey's on EVs, and I wrote this down. I'm just starting to learn more about the, the charging and that there's like fast chargers, there's superchargers and. How, how many categories are there? There's like three or four categories or something?
So far, just three, but as technology gets better, there's sort of now all these intermediaries. So I mentioned sort of a fast level two now. Um, so.
Where's that fall in your three?
Like, it's like a two and a half, three being the fastest.
And that's a supercharger. Do we have any of those?
Not yet.
We want, uh, from my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, those are, could be harmful if used consistently.
To your car.
To a vehicle?
Yeah, so it's like, um, oh, what's a good example? It's, it's just like putting a lot of stress on the battery because you're doing it really fast. There's, there's heat and expansion of the battery and everything. So if you're an EV owner, you wanna use like the most moderate and kinda consistent charging that you can. But for people who are, have range anxiety, or we have a fleet, like, we have our, we have our, you know, our CSOs. That need to charge immediately, once they get their lightning, something like that, then they can plug in and charge in thirty minutes and be back to full battery. But you don't wanna do that all the time in your vehicle. It puts too much wear and tear on the battery.
So all of our chargers currently are level two or?
All of our public ones, so we do, we do have um, fast chargers for our buses. And then we're looking at a pub.
Charger is a supercharger or is?
Yes, and there's, even within level three, there's a couple different, you know, the amount of KWs that are delivered. Um, KWH that's delivered, but um, we are looking at a project with Excel Energy where they would own the charger. Um, at the South Branch Library, so we would have our first fast charger here. The nearest one to us is in Frisco at Walmart.
Perfect. Thank you. For the library card, I guess, the fast charger. Get a fast charge. Library card gets your free, free charge. Housing childcare.
Yeah, update wise, um, we did have a housing committee meeting right before Christmas, and I think our notes are in your packet. I don't know if you have any questions on those. Primarily, we talked about Stillson, which you're gonna see later in your agenda. Talked about um, our buy downs. We had one close yesterday, have one closing Friday, so that's starting to happen. Um, some other issues, but those are documented in your um, minutes. So don't know if you had any questions there. If you do, we're here. Um, we did have a childcare committee meeting last Wednesday, and those minutes are not yet in your packet. Any questions?
When is the new block eleven apartments going to be move in ready?
We are believing we're gonna have a TCO tomorrow, so it's imminent. Um, and that's on the first building. Um, the second, third buildings will be a couple of weeks after that. But I think we'll probably have our first move, move ins Monday, Tuesday, you know, we're supposed to get the CEO tomorrow, let's hope we do. Um, nobody's in such urgent situation that they need to move in, you know, the day after tomorrow. Um, so we're gonna, you know, get Ricardo with Quorum over there, um, and just start planning to move people in next week.
And this has been about a thirty day delay from what you were expecting or?
Um, yeah, we were expecting the first building would be ready before Christmas. But that was more our expectation that we had put on them um, in terms of the actual contract. Um, I don't know how many days over the actual contract they're over, but.
Have you walked through them?
Uh, Melanie has walked through them quite a few times. I think she was out there maybe this morning or yesterday. Um, she thinks they're ready. Um, I mean, they're gonna be super cool when they get people in. The units are awesome, um, so.
On, on the uh, properties that we own that were kinda waiting to sell that were sitting on, is there a? When do we decide, oh, we're gonna rent this out for six months, get someone through the season or?
I think at this point, um, you know, with the opening of block eleven, um, our preference is really to sell those buy downs. Um, and we're starting to see some action on them. Um, so our, our goal, I mean, I think there's about nineteen of them now that we expect to sell. Um, and I don't think we wanna go down the road of doing short term leases on those. We don't, I mean, we, we hear that block eleven isn't even quite full yet, um, in terms of our waitlist there. So um, and then, you know, with the opening of Alta Verdi, I think there's just been a little bit loosening, so I'd rather sell them.
And someone asked me this question, I don't know if it's, it's valid or not. Is there an issue with uh, people like vets that are trying to borrow money on a de-districted place? The, whatever the Veterans Affair thing that lends money to.
VA loan or something.
VA loan, is, is that something? Have you heard anything about that?
No, we've not had anybody, you know, fail um, lending um, because of the deed restriction.
Have you ever?
I've seen any from that standpoint, there's usually some sort of alternative option out there. So no, I haven't heard any. Answer your question, that's like over two hundred units.
Cool. And one additional question about the, going back to the Wayside Inn, Lowjum. Where does that fall in like the low hang fruit as far as getting that on uh, on uh. Uh, sewer and, and expanding that or looking at that, like, does that fall in between? Like Stillson and Block Eleven, or is it below, like, in your hierarchy?
In the hierarchy, um, yeah, thank God we have that. We, we have our units basically full or close to full. But um, you know, we're planning on water and sewer next year. We've got that in the budget. We're working with the county. Yeah, twenty-three this year. I guess we're in twenty-three, so um, this year we'll get water and sewer. Um, definitely a priority, get hooked up to water and sewer. I think I had plugged in um, funds to do a redo um, in two years or so.
The septic, the holding, I believe the septic has a crack.
It has a crack, yeah.
It's gotta get, we've gotta get it off of septic in, in the sewer. And uh, I mean, that's, that's a big part of it.
Additional units there is.
I think that's, that's a few years down the road probably. We need to see how it operates, how it works. We're gonna, we'll come back to you. We really, uh, we're doing, we've amended the housing uh, pro forma. And in the first meeting in February, we're gonna, first or second meeting in February, we're gonna be coming back with uh. Um, appropriations for the twenty-three budget to change, cause we wanna do those promptly after we've made changes. And we'll be updating the budget for the housing based on the new pro forma and the spends and the projects we're doing. And we'll, we'll share with you at that time, kind of where, where we're at, and I think how we need to really look at everything strategically. We, we'd like, we wanna share it with the housing committee at the first meeting in February. And then first, and then we'll bring it to the council at that second meeting in February.
Thank you.
So there's some things that we're watching. We're spending a lot of money on housing, which is good. We're bringing in a lot, but we're still spending a lot. And we just, you know, we're actually recommending cutting back on a few program things.
Oh, really?
But yeah.
What's going on at Alta Verdi?
Alta Verdi one, um, last time I heard, they were up to about thirty-five tennis. But I didn't get an update from Kimball this week, so um, let me get that from her and I can forward it out.
Getting close to fifty percent.
Yeah.
And are they all move in ready?
Yeah, Alta Verdi one, everything is moving ready.
So we think there's an income, is an AMI situation?
Um, yeah, they're still getting a lot of applicants and um, you know, the majority are over income. But um, um, I'll get a full update from her, cause I, I think when I talked to her, she had filled all of the higher AMIs. Um, and they were even filling the sixty percent AMIs, um, but it was the thirty percents that were challenging. But I'll get a full update.
Yeah, and when the county said that they had that, like a Lytec project over in Silverthorn that they had a waitlist for, did we ever get that waitlist? Like, reach out to those people and let them know that we.
Um, I will check, I mean, um, yeah, I mean, they probably have a waitlist at the higher AMIs of anything. But um, I'll check for sure.
I mean, at what point do we try to get some? Well, higher ups involved to help us with, you know, do we, I mean, do we, do we go to Negoos's office at some point? Or Hickenlooper and Bennett and say?
You need to have these set, they need to be setting vacant for several, a few months. So we have units, you know, we have units setting vacant that we can't fill because of this. And I think you need to give it a few months to let it work through this process a little and see, see what they tell us. Because we're not hearing, they're not panicking yet. They can't fill these, I think they're gonna fill them, and so.
The, the only. They're not panicking, but we fill everything pretty quickly, and all of a sudden, these aren't getting filled. You know, we put sources into these for a housing crisis. It's not getting filled either, is, are things changing enough that we need?
We haven't opened an eighty unit building here uh, since Pinewood One was built and.
Oh, I guess it begs the question, does a two hundred seventy-five unit building next door, what's that? What's gonna happen to the next phase?
Yeah, but that, those are all higher incomes.
No, no, I know, but are there two hundred and seventy-five?
I think there are.
At the higher AMIs.
Based on the applications that aren't qualifying, I.
So there's enough of those that would fill Alta Verdi too.
She's excited actually to see all those applications, even though she can't house them now. It helps her feel a more assured about the next project, so.
I mean, there's a lot more flexibility on two. You could do master leasing.
The buy downs, we've got two that are pending right now.
Um, we closed on Magnum Bonum today, and we are selling a Highland Green into this week. Um.
High Tour as well?
Uh, High Tour is getting shown a lot.
Okay, but that's not under at the moment.
Um, there, I, I have been told there are two potential contracts on that.
Cool, we've got five listings right now that are sitting out there that aren't pending.
Okay, lazy saddles and wildflower.
Yeah, the other ones, we have put people in temporarily until Block Eleven opens, so we're not pushing those. So as soon as Block Eleven opens, then yes, there's five.
Cool, yeah, I would encourage us to just keep being aggressive on pricing as we roll these out to just keep days on market low and keep them rolling.
Kathy has mentioned she has several people looking at town houser as soon as we're out of there. So she believes she has some buyers that are ready and waiting till we're not using them.
Yeah.
Some of these cost expense because we're using them as rentals, so, or like, I don't understand why they wouldn't just go on the balance sheet. Like, why would we expense the cost of a, of a unit that we bought? Uh, this is on uh.
The, the four that show is expensed.
Yeah.
Because we bought them so long ago. The program was managed completely differently at that point. Now, when we buy a buy down, it does sit as an asset. Once we sell it is when we, it goes on to, you'll see it in the budget as the community investment portion. So we just, now we just book the difference between what we bought it for versus what we sold it for. But back in the nineties, I guess some of those are older, um, we were expensing it right away. So that's why.
I did have one last question before we leave, um, and this is in regard to the governor's state of the state or state of the union. I'm not sure what it's actually called, but um.
State.
State of the state. When I talked to the governor's office yesterday, they wanted to make sure that all of our council knew that they would. Welcome them and would love to have them also attend that state of the state. Um, that is on the seventeenth, so a week from today. So I wanted to try to get a head count, cause I think Eric, you're going, Kelly, you're going. Todd, have you replied to anybody yet, or you just want to go?
Just today, just a few minutes ago.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
Official enough to be a.
That's great, Todd. Um, anybody else? It is, um, you know, they have indicated that they are really gonna be highlighting this particular project in the speech. And afterwards, and the governor wants to spend some time with our council um, before his speech. And again, after his speech, um, so just to talk more about our project and our program. So um, it, it's a long time they're expecting us to be down there. Um, they want us to arrive at eight and, and stay there till one.
They wouldn't be there at eight o'clock?
They, and stay through one. Um, and so it, it, it's a long period of time, but we'll, you know, arrange some carpooling, but I'm just trying to find out for sure. So we have Todd, Carol.
Okay, I'll let you know tomorrow.
I'm Jay. I'll put you on the list, and I'll have the governor's office contact you directly, just to give you the logistics, and then they get the credentials all done.
So the governor does a state of the state address every year in January. We're being invited, cause part of the speech mentions the county and the towns project, that he's pretty, they're just a center housing project that we're doing.
He's highlighting that project as part of his agenda on workforce housing.
The full day.
Alright, so I've got Todd, Carol, Jay, Kelly, and Eric.
Alright, uh, let's move on to committee reports, which there is really nothing.
I got a dermatologist appointment.
So does Dick. You guys should go together.
Yeah, I'm going to Papadopoulos on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
I, I'd like to check out some of your lesions.
Okay.
Council discount.
Please move on.
Uh, events committee, any questions on the memo?
I had one, um. Is, does Jesse still here? Yeah.
Uh, John Door is now our.
There's John Door, um. Are, are we getting close to banning single-use plastics at events?
We're looking into that, to whether there will be some legal ramifications, but that's our goal.
Yeah, so that question came directly from our last events committee, and then it was in our packet today for our discussion. They were waiting to hear what council was gonna say when I brought it up.
Cause I would be very supportive of that. I mean, it's a great way to take a step forward. It's just to do it at events.
And we should be able to do it in our own facilities also.
Which we currently do in our, in our town facilities, but.
Cause.
Horse and Riverwalk right now.
Yeah, I know at the Riverwalk, I've been told to buy water. When I've tried to get a cup. Yeah, we're trying to work with them on that. We've had conversations recently, so. Great, thanks, John.
Awesome. Questions for John? How's it going? Good, how are you guys? Vents, uh, your vents thing.
It's great. Yeah, thanks. Second meeting. Way more comfortable today.
You're good.
Tucked in my shirt for you too.
You look good.
Well, I know it looks better than the two of us.
Is BCA stepping up to take the lead in the uh, DEI um, Pride event now? I, I saw they're now involved based on the minutes.
Yeah, no, it won't be um, for a variety of reasons, so we'll have another meeting here shortly. To sort of finalize some of the plans and whether or not we're gonna use a consultant to help us with that planning. But I think we have a good outline of what that event will look like. And um, it, it didn't quite rise to the level of having BCA be involved.
So they're not involved at all still.
They'll still stay on, and they're gonna have um, one of their staff members continue with the planning group. So there'll still be a connection with them, but they're not managing or running the event. Sure.
And you guys saw the notes from the transit parking plan meeting that Shannon sent um, after the packet went out. But uh, I feel really strong with the BTO, Breck Park, CDOT, Public Works Department, that we've got a good plan for the busiest weekend, Breckenridge sees. Any questions?
Well, um, and one of the items that wasn't on that list that Matt brought up today is CDOT has um, agreed. If we want to have this, that they would put some kind. That they would put some kind of messaging on their I seventy signs that say something to the effect that there's a event in Breckenridge on those particular days of that high viewing time um and to expect heavy traffic. I think, you know, we haven't really had a lot of time to bet that as an option. I could see benefits to it, I can also see, I can also see some downsides to it, um, I'm not.
A lot of diversion to Copper Mountain.
Yeah, I mean, it could divert people that we don't really want diverted. Um, so we thought we'd just mention it to you and see how you all felt about it.
Yeah, we felt everything south of town was no problem, but definitely just a question about I seventy.
People are already. So they're not, it's not like you're gonna get them to stop and carpool, which is where we'd really like to do upfront, we work on that. I would be a little.
And I think there was some desire on the part of the town of Frisco that maybe there's a little bit more done because they do see some of the traffic impacts when we're backed up. But I, again, to Rick's point, I'm not sure how effective the messaging would be, they'd probably put it up on Friday.
Maybe they would go to Vale and just say.
Heavy congestion in Breckenridge. Due to an event.
Go to Keystone or Vale, right, it would.
Weather or anything like that, they wouldn't put any message up because they would use their message boards for accidents or.
But it could also divert other people, so.
There's probably more downside than upside to it.
I like setting expectations though, and if we're able to provide that expectation for potential guests that are in the dark. Like, listen, this is the number ten thing on Fifty Two Eighties magazine to do, you know, in Colorado, you know, and so people aren't gonna know about it. But if you just have the people bringing up their, their couple of kids or whatever and they, they don't know, I think those expectations are pretty good. I, 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 I would love to look into it and bet it a little bit further personally, but.
I think staff could go either way, I'm sorry, we don't have a strong recommendation one way or the other. I think we see that there's pros and cons to it, so.
Bud, any thoughts? Kelly?
I think there's more down than up potential, so negative than positive potential, so I believe it as is.
I agree with Jay.
What do you think the downsides are, like, other than, do you think people will say, oh, there's an event in Breck, we'll go there or like what's?
The other way, I, I, I say that. That, you know, we've been handling it up to now, yeah, you know, people don't like the weekend, you know, locals get, get frustrated. But I think for the people coming up here, generally, we can handle their expectations of enjoying the event, plus those that wanna ski. And by throwing a wrench in the works like that, I just, yeah, I, I, I don't know. Then, you know, might, might be uh is setting realistic expectations or it might be um just biting the hand of uh of the skiers.
We asked Lucy.
Hmm?
Phone a friend.
Phone a friend, she's in the audience. Let's go to the audience, right, that's not phone a friend.
Let's go to the audience.
Lucy, do you have an opinion? I'm gonna get you a mic for the.
People that are.
Thank you. Um, we talked about it in our parking and transit meeting um last week and we, you know, same thing, pros and cons. Uh, my concern was I didn't wanna do, we didn't wanna do anything to divert too much skier traffic and then potentially really hurt Ski Resort, who's a primary sponsor for that event. Um, but the Ski Resort is okay, I mean, everybody's open to the conversation and making a good decision here. So y- y- you know, it, it's a tough one, you know, we don't wanna hurt the businesses. I mean, I, I thought it was great that the parking and transit crew was worried about the main, uh, the businesses on Main Street and didn't wanna hurt business too much by diverting too much traffic. If we're comfortable with, um, you know, we did with reservations last year, we were able to divert some people to Friday and Sunday. And Saturday was clearly busy, but it was an overrun, you know. If we have a year like last year, I think we're okay without the C dot signage. You know, it's just, it's just hard to say reservations, we can't really tell, it's a little early yet to tell on the reservations, they're a little bit behind. But there's been some problems with the um, the reservation system, so it was down for a little bit. Um, but we will know a few days out, like if reservations are way ahead of where they were last year for that Saturday or not. And maybe we can make this decision closer in based on that.
We're really struggling.
It's really sixes.
Probably best not to do it.
Not to do it, I, I agree with you. Thank you, Lucy.
Other questions?
Snow sculptures, have we focused any of the messaging on locals and residents? Just a nice reminder that this is the busiest weekend of the year, either take the bus, we can chokeate the bus, do your errands early. Have we done any of that type of?
Public outreach in terms of that, um, not specifically, but we can absolutely do that moving forward just to send them, especially not having the second weekend that Monday, Tuesday. Uh, we talked about in our events meeting, um, you know, the spectacle of knocking the sculptures down, so going to see them at the very end and then watching, watching the plows go down. But we can absolutely do that public outreach for, for our uh local population.
Great, and then in the one pager, that was I think from Maj originally, they talked about working with C dot on timing of some of the lights. Do you think it would be worth looking at Huron, that left turn, which is sometimes that light is just so short if we could make it longer?
Absolutely, yeah, I will follow up with uh C dot and Public Works um that control those lights.
Great, thank you.
Anything else for John?
Oh, on uh, um, yep, Country Boy Mine, Mining Games, do you know, are they working with Breck history at all or have they been in discussion with them?
So you still got your microphone back there, um, I believe they are, cause uh. I'm.
Yes, Mike, from the mine.
Yeah, the mining games are, um, it's a re, this is like a two-minute conversation I had with Mike Shipley, who owns Country Boy Mine, his idea. And that's as far as it's gone, we think it's a cool idea, some concepts like the Spartan Games, but localized. Um, and that's as far as we've gone, so it's on the agenda for our next BEC meeting for us to flesh out.
Yeah, for those of you that remember, Outhouse Races kind of bringing back that local. It could be something pretty neat.
Yeah, cool.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
A quick five-minute break. Outdoor energy use discussion.
I thought it would be funny.
Outdoor energy use discussion.
Right. So will we get that going? Um, this is an agenda item related to mitigating outdoor energy use. Um, and I'm gonna walk us through kind of the program overview since it is a new council from the last time that we met. Um, a lot of the details are in the memo, so I might refer you to that as well. Um, and then, of course, happy to answer any questions, but off we go. All right, so as you know, we spent the last year developing the Sustainable Breck Plan, which is uh was really an update to our ten-year long-range sustainability plan. We also have a climate action plan that was adopted in twenty nineteen that we share with all of our um, the other jurisdictions in Summit County. Both of those plans identify a policy related to mitigating outdoor energy use. Um, it's kind of a unique situation that we have in ski towns where we um have a high alpine environment, a lot of um slip and fall incidences and really just a lot of high amenities that people, um, people want to have in their homes as they visit this area. And so this is really designed to understand the um energy intensity of those systems and then try to mitigate it with clean energy. Um, we just updated our greenhouse gas inventory, the first one was done in twenty seventeen, which really gave us a great baseline in understanding what our greenhouse gas emissions are, primarily from what we call scope one and two emissions. Um, and that identifies eighty-five percent of our greenhouse gas emissions come from our buildings, both, both residential and commercial combined. And as you all know, we just did the Zero Energy Ready Home Program, the Sustainable Building Energy Code. Um, and that really regulates energy use indoors. Um, what we don't have is a mandatory policy that addresses outdoor energy use. And so I'll let Mark talk a little bit about what we do have today and how this program would sit in the code.
Thanks, Jesse, good afternoon. Um, yeah, so right now it's limited really to the development code, our policy thirty-three R. Where we will give negative points for um outdoor heated space. So like snow melt on driveways or patios, that can get negative points and it accrues depending on the amount of square footage associated with that. Also for um pools, larger hot tubs, and then for gas fireplaces, I think there's a minus one for those. So we have some um disincentives to that. And then, of course, as you know how our code works, you can then overcome those by getting positive points for something else. Right now, there's nothing directly related to energy, so, I mean, you can get positive points for energy, for example, for putting in EV chargers and things like that. Or um increasing your efficiency of your building um beyond the hers kind of index score. But um you can also do things like put in landscaping, um, anything else that gets you positive points to overcome that. So there's not a direct tie there right now, the way it's works. Um, if we move forward with this program, we would probably be getting rid of those negative points because we'd be talking about offsetting directly onsite for all these things. Um, so we would have to make changes to thirty-three R and then most of this, though, um, would end up being in the building code, residential, commercial codes. Um, regarding any um requirements for um offsetting outdoor use.
Thank you. Um, so back in uh twenty nineteen, when the um, the building codes, the building energy code specifically was updated. One of the things we heard going through that process from builders was um, not just builders from the industry, was what about outdoor energy use? Great, we're targeting indoor energy use, what about existing buildings and outdoor energy use? And so we formed a subgroup, um, primarily made of the folks here on the screen and they worked through the next, um, really year and a half to come up with the recommendations here. We've had two work sessions with the council prior to this one, um, this, after the second one in July of last, January of last year, excuse me. Um, council directed staff to go continue our outreach and meet specifically with designers and architects. Um, builders and contractors and then, and then realtors, and we did that in March. Um, and had some really great conversations with folks. Um, and the proposals that I'll go through here include the comments from that uh cycle of round tables back in March. So the goals of this program are to um create economic price signals that reduce excessive outdoor energy use. Um, any outdoor energy use that does go in, um, the intent would be to offset the, the remaining energy use onsite. And then the um. the economic signal or the the dollars that would be used to mitigate the program, to mitigate, excuse me, to mitigate the energy onsite would be reinvested into community renewable energy and energy efficiency projects. On the left-hand side here, you can just see a handful of the mountain resort communities that have already put a program like this in place. Some are as old as 20 years old in Aspen and Pitt King County. Some are a little bit more recent than that, Crested Butte. Telly Ride is not on here, but they also have a program like this. Vale does not, but Eagle County, as a county jurisdiction, does. On the right-hand side, you can see the proposals from the stakeholder group related to residential and commercial outdoor energy uses. So on the residential side, you're looking at any personal hot tubs and spas that exceed 64 square feet. So that's a your typical eight-person hot tub, the, you know, the kind of stuff that's we see in a lot of single-family homes. This would be anything over that size, pools, any snow melt that goes in. And then related to the natural gas fire pits, none of the programs on the left-hand side have contemplated natural gas fire pits. I will say Aspen is looking at it now. And so we didn't have any data really to to build in the natural gas fire pit portion. So the recommendation was that we require some timers, but no actual mitigation measures or penalties for that. On the commercial side, I will say that we are looking at proposing a 10% offset there instead. And then also with related to heat trace and heat tape, there would be no offset requirement, but we would require some sort of control system. And then we're also proposing that other piped or permanent natural gas appliances, we're seeing a lot of homes recreating their kitchen outside. So this would be meant to be addressed, the the outdoor kitchen scenario. On the commercial side, any hot tubs and spas, pools, snow melt, as I mentioned, the natural gas fire pits were proposing a 10% offset. And then we're also looking at the radiant heaters, heat trace, requiring controls, and then again, the other piped and permanent natural gas appliances. So that's intended to not just be a fire pit, but a fireplace, you know, all of these creative ways that we can rename appliances that burn natural gas. So that was that, these are the scenarios that this proposal would cover. So why would we be doing this? As we've learned, and frankly, we've had a steep and hard learning curve here in Breckenridge, but we're seeing the results of burning natural gas impact not only our local climate, but the climate globally. I was just talking to Mark that just yesterday, The Times reported that the US Commission, now I'm going to blank on the agency. Anyway, identified natural gas as a public health hazard. And so they're looking at even potentially banning or limiting gas appliances to the extent that they can as an agency. So this is not, we are not cutting edge. This is something that everyone is looking at. Related to snow melt, I just wanted to use an example here that is a fairly average size of today's commercial snow melt systems that we're seeing. Some are larger, some are less. And if you take the annual energy use, and this does account for times when it's idle and not being run, you would see a really large number. I mean, I couldn't even put all the zeros up there related to the BTUs of energy per year. And that would be about 155 megawatts of solar PV to be 100% offset. That's three times the size of our local solar garden. So for one snow melt system, we're looking at a solar garden that's three times as big as the one we have today.
Do we have any idea if, say, if there wasn't that 50,000 square feet, how much petrol would be burnt, plowing, shoveling, or not shoveling, but?
So we don't, we don't have that. We don't have that exact number. Vale did a study that looked at this very thing, and it didn't. What it did was resulted in some generalities, and it's really hard to tell because it all depends on snow plowing is much more on demand. Snows, you do it. These sit idle, which still use about 45% of the energy, even when they're not fully operating. And there's some other nuances, so it. I don't have a direct answer for you, except to say that the Vale study said that they would prefer the plowing from a carbon perspective than doing it this way. And I can get you guys that that study. But we get asked that question a lot. The trade-offs. Here's a residential example, and I I pick on this one only because the Summit Daily highlighted this in one of their real estate sections. But this is a property up on Timber Trail that put in nearly 5,000 square feet of snow melt related to driveways, entryways, and patios. And this would result in a 98 kilowatt solar system. If they didn't, under this proposed program, and I'll go through the calculations here in a minute, but if they didn't install that solar, the proposed payment in lieu at 100% offset would be about $300,000 for this facility.
That's 100%?
That's at 100%, yep. And that does not include the 18-person spa on this property and some of the other amenities that was just looking at the snow melt. And to put that energy use in perspective, that's 16 Wellington Homes for a year. So here's an example of the calculation that the building department would be using if we move forward with this. This was developed by Resource Engineering Group out of Crested Butte. This is also the same type of calculator that they use in Pitt King County and the city of Aspen. The yellow cells are fillable. And so this is where you would come in with an application and you would say, I have 500 square feet of snow melt. And you would put it into line one, and it, the efficiency column is related to the efficiency of the boiler. And so if the boiler is 96% efficient, that line item can also be changed. And then it it calculates your offset in terms of solar or a payment in lieu. So that is to say, if you didn't want to install the solar, or perhaps you don't have enough room on your property to install the full amount of solar, you could do partial solar payment in lieu and and/or a combination of those two things. And so the same thing goes for all of the other amenities here. So the spa is calculated slightly differently, the outdoor pool. And then you could see that under heat tape, electric heaters and gas-fired heaters, the offset column, which is this column here, you could see they're set to zero right now for residential. And so this number can also change based on council's direction. But right now, what we're asking for is just really informational and education for the applicant to say, oh, you want to install a gas-fired heater or fire pit? Here's what that energy use is. And, you know, trying to get people to understand what that energy intensity is. So this is the residential calculator. There's also one for commercial, which is slightly different.
Jesse, when you just said this is for education, so is who's going to sit down with the owner, not the builder, and tell them this? Because they're the ones who will be interested in that.
That's a great point.
Well, be the applicant representing the owner that's coming in and filling this out.
Because that's just not going to work. I mean, they're just going to say like, well, okay, thanks. And like, a lot of the people who buy in Breckenridge want to do what's right, if they can get the information. But if it's just a contractor or an applicant coming in, then that information is not going to get to the person who needs to make the decision and wants to probably, or not wants to probably, sometimes might want to make, you know, more environmentally sensitive decision. You don't have to solve that right now, but I think that's really important.
Yeah, it's a great point. So if the goal is education, how do you educate the person who's actually in the home? And I think, you know, we hear often from our energy, like our building professionals doing the energy work, that it's often hard to to get to the homeowner ultimately with this information. It's one of the reasons actually that led us to repeal the section in the Sustainable Building Code related to the retrofits and improvements, because we were requiring an energy audit at that point, and the information wasn't always getting back to the homeowner. And so there weren't actually changes being made with the information that was provided by the energy professional. So there are certainly challenges, and we hear about that elsewhere as well. I I don't have an answer for you to how to do better.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to set up a process where the owner has to sign off, but that it would take something like that to ensure that the owner was provided that information.
I would love to see that. I mean, I think that's the most meaningful way to.
Well, otherwise, the same people that already know this stuff coming into full applications.
Not only already knows this stuff, but they're just not that motivated to do something different. And what we're asking for is a change.
I don't even know if signing off is enough. I think the owner, maybe a verbal phone call.
Maybe you could just talk a little bit about that among yourselves.
Jesse, is the proposed approach going to be to require onsite offset before we will consider cash-in lieu?
Yeah, so that was, that's kind of come and gone. And ultimately, I think we can make a recommendation to you, but that's going to come down to council. The stakeholder group initially said, yes, there needs to be a priority. And you can only not, you can choose not to mitigate onsite only if there are certain conditions that are met. But in talking through some of the implementation of that, we felt like it could be more flexible to allow someone to make to make the payment instead. And so I think staff wants to make sure that you're you're exhausting everything upfront that you can in order to mitigate offsite. But I, but there has been competing recommendations from from the stakeholder group on that.
Yeah, I just, I just worry, you know, it'll be a cost-benefit analysis, and the cost doesn't matter. And and it does to us, because that's it's our environment.
Right.
Jesse, on that, could you talk about the pink and blue and how those funds would be distributed? Would it be town? Would we work with a partner?
Yeah. So, um, so ultimately, the funds that are collected in RAMP would stay in the RAMP program. And the way we can design it however we want, but the the way that it's worked in other communities is that there's a set amount that's that is, it's basically like a grant process. So you have a project, it meets certain criteria, and we're really going to want to target decarbonization projects. So not just like lighting upgrades. We already rebate programs like that through our existing Energy Smart Program. But decarbonization and electrification is really what we would be targeting. And so we would, there would, ideally, there would be a group that meets to look at those those grant project applications and make recommendations. And then it's an annual appropriation by the by the council. In like the, in Pitt King County, for example, the organization's name is Core. It's a lot like High Country Conservation Center, who sort of advises on and participates in that advisory group, and they make the recommendations to council. And they've seen that program. I was just talking to a staffer from the city of Aspen who's looking to update this here in the next month or two. And they're looking at actually loosening that up a little bit to allow for some of those funds to be spent on public projects as well that still meet the criteria of the program. So, you know, you're looking at major, like right now, one of the challenges that we're having is existing existing buildings electrifying. So maybe they have gas heating, and they want to go all-electric, they want to install heat pumps, but it it's just too cost prohibitive right now to do that. And so those are the types of projects that we would want to help seed with this funding to help achieve our decarbonization goals.
Yeah, that's helpful. And then there's the studies that have been done in existing communities. Those dollars almost have that kind of that larger impact.
Six, sixfold, basically. So for every dollar collected through RAMP, you're seeing basically a six-point return, whether it's through your energy efficiency or cost savings on the projects that you're investing in. I don't need to spend a ton of time on this. This is just the the commercial calculator here. I used the 50,000 square feet example that we had before. And so this is how you get. Where's my cursor here? This is how you get to that PV offset number. And then if you didn't do the PV offset for some reason, you're you're looking at a fairly significant payment in lieu for a system of this size. Like I said, you could do a combination of these two things. You could install partial PV and then do the remainder payment in lieu. But this is how, you know, th- this is the amount of funding that gets reinvested into other community efficiency projects that really makes the difference.
Jesse, do you? This is a tough question, because I can't, I'm having trouble wrapping my mind around this. But do you worry that there's going to be a little bit of double dipping from a project that was planning on doing PV anyway? That was going to use the PV for interior space, but is now going to take the credit for it for the outdoor piece?
Well, right now, the only requirement would be for the outdoor piece. So if they're going to use it for their interior space, they're not required to.
I know, yeah, I get that, but we're
They would have done it.
We're almost handicapping. You know, you know what I mean? I mean, it's not, it's get, you're getting to the right thing, but I don't know if we're, I don't know. As opposed to, honestly, as opposed to going back to the code and doing more of a negative point, upping the negative points and disallowing more of this than than what we're doing is we're allowing it if you have either the money or the space to do it. As opposed to saying this isn't.
They'll do it at all.
Well, or don't do it as big. That house should not have that much snow melt and a 16-person hot tub, straight up. So how do we, how do we prevent some of that instead of allowing it with a? You know what I'm getting at? Does that buy you way out of it? Yeah, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, and and this is sort of the this is always the conundrum, right, that people can pay their way out. But for those people that that can pay their way out, the the money that is collected and reinvested in projects is is yielding, is helping to not just mitigate that project, but do better across the entire community. You know, to Mark's point about Policy 33R, we will absolutely make sure that we're not giving credit for double for double dipping essentially. But you know, I think the results that we have seen in mature programs in other communities is that people do less, and that's the goal. And so will there be a few projects that don't and are crazy excessive and still do all the things and and pay a million dollars for a single-family home because they want 5,000 square feet of snow melt? Yes, but then we can do really good work with those with those dollars too. But we do see the actual result of them installing less as well. Takes a little minute to catch on, though.
I think there's also, correct me if I'm wrong, but a hybrid situation too, or you you offset some of it with as much PV as you can put, for example, on your rooftop. There's a limit there, but then the rest you pay. So you're getting partway there. The other thing is, is I believe there's, it doesn't have to be solar, or you could do something in addition, like you do ground source heat pumps.
Exactly.
And so that's another way that you could offset a lot of your energy use. So there's some other alternatives too. Those are, that's a renewable source as well.
Because when you're getting up into those offset dollars that are that high, it becomes affordable.
To Mark's point, and thank you for for clarifying that, you know, this whole program is based on the cost of solar PV. That does not mean you have to do PV. So anything that is considered renewable under the code and that is allowed by code can be used. And I don't have the live version of the calculator. It was linked in your packet, but you can go along the bottom. There are worksheets, and you can dive a little deeper into how we got to those number, not we, Resource Engineering Group got to those numbers. And and you can see that if you wanted to substitute a ground source heat pump, for example, that you could, you would be allowed to do that. There's also credit given for like really, really efficient systems or things that we haven't thought of yet. There's credit given for those types, like if the, if the team, the project team comes in and says, hey, here's this new idea we want to try. There is some partial credit that can be given for those types of projects, like heat recovery and, you know, stuff like that. Stuff like that.
Yeah, Mark, um. Opposite of what Jesse was talking about of new innovative ways of, uh, of. Of being more, um, energy efficient. Is there any way to encourage like the lowest tech and just to have pitched roofs that shed snow that. Need less, uh, heat tape to have fewer dormers that suck out, uh, heat from the building and. To like kind of go to a design or encourage a design that is more efficient in just its shape. And its design?
You know, Jay, we could certainly take a look at that. Um, we've given a fair amount of license to our architects to, you know, there's some pretty. Pretty complicated roof forms out there, that type of thing. Um, so, but if that's something the council really wanted to do, we could take a look into that and.
Just curious, looking at with a different lens of instead of like new technology and new things that. You know, if they, if, if it breaks in five years and all these energy uses still there, it really doesn't do us a lot of good where. I think if you, you know, you go into the Alps or you go Switzerland and all the roofs are the same be, for a reason, because it's the most efficient use. Um, of like the, just the natural of the, the climate that we are, we're in.
Yeah, and maybe what we could do also is more of an emphasis on passive solar. You know, just what the home gets is natural solar heat, which helps a lot with all this. Um, so that's something that, you know, if we wanted to prioritize or incentivize, we could certainly look into. What we could do as far as that goes. It's really about citing the, the home to maximize that.
So I recognize that this is a lot of, um, a lot of. Very complicated calculations and details around energy, but what we're looking for today is direction. Um, if the council wants to pursue this policy to, to come back with a draft ordinance, um. I did outline, I want to highlight again, the public outreach process that we have done over the last year in your memo. So. Um, if there's any detail or follow-up questions that you have about that, I'm happy to answer it, but. We did, um, take council's input and go back, um, essentially to the drawing board and had some, um, pretty robust discussions. With our roundtables and, and, you know, have had people with eyes on the draft, on a proposed draft ordinance already. Um, the, the biggest, the biggest questions in terms of moving forward to bring something back would be. Um, do you agree with the offset amounts? And so we're really talking about a hundred percent offset for those major categories. Snowmelt, pool, spas, and then, um, that lesser amount on the commercial side for the natural gas fire pits. Um, we can, we can implement something today and then come back and change the offsets in. You know, in short order or medi- medium term, if we're learning stuff along the way. Um, but most programs, with the exception of Carbondale, do a hundred percent offset for those major categories at a minimum. Carbondale, I believe, is eighty percent. I gotta fact check that. Thank you. So you could do a combination of that as well.
And what do they do for the gas fire pits?
So the gas fire pits on the residential side, there's no proposed offset. So again, it's just, they would have to fill out the calculator during permit application. And that's to your point, the homeowner need, we need to somehow get that in front of the homeowner. Um.
Carbondale.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right now, there's nobody, uh, none of the programs currently contemplate the natural gas. Aspen is changing that.
Goes to me too. I think the commercial fire pits, the ten percent offset's okay for the first. And I don't know the right number, one or two or three, but once you start getting more than that, it should go up quickly.
Okay.
Oh, that's a good.
Yeah.
I mean, because some of these places have.
On the commercial side.
Yes, have a bunch of.
Will go in for residential too.
Or maybe that too. Maybe you give them. You give them one for free and then after that it starts escalating.
Okay.
On, on residential. But I love the idea of requiring all of them to have timers.
Okay.
Okay, how's everybody feel about these three bullet points?
I like proceeding with REMP, um, on the offsets. I love the hundred percent for onsite. I'd actually like to see a higher number on the payment in lieu, um, or an offsite. So in, in Mountain Town twenty thirty to me was like. Kind of life-changing from a perspective of, I, I think we need to lead here in the town of Breckenridge when it comes to all this stuff, right? Like our, our communities based on mitigating climate change. And so I, I'm. I'm down with more than all of those suggestions on there. So I'd like to see a higher. Payment in lieu, whether that's a hundred and fifty percent or a hundred and twenty-five, something that pushes you to do it onsite. Because I think that's really valuable. Um, and then on the ten percent for the commercial, I think that's too low. Again, I'd like to, to personally, I think we, we go higher. That's my two cents.
I'm going to jump in because I so rarely agree with him.
Wow.
Um, so I agree with Todd.
Well done. And I generally do as well. I, I think the ten percent's okay for like my previous comment, just with the first one or two or three or whatever. Um, I also like where he's going with, you know, the, the cash and lose higher. Um, I don't know the right numbers, but I think, you know, the more we can incent to offset onsite, the better.
Um, I agree with everything. Um, I would really like to discourage more than one gas fireplace at a residential. I just can't even understand that. And, um. I think ten percent is low, but if you want to try that for a year or if you get some information that would encourage you to go higher. And certainly to discourage more than, well, I don't know what the square footage should be, you know, for. Commercial to have one, two or three or even more than that, but some figuring out of that situation.
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of moving forward with REMP. Um, on the fire pits, I like the idea of both commercial and residential. Starting at that ten percent. And I think why that number is so low because the cost is huge. But that's reflective of the negative impact it's having. So I think both residential and commercial should start at ten. Or maybe a little higher and then scale up with the number of fireplaces that are installed. But otherwise, I agree with everything that's been said.
I. I, I'm supportive, but I do get a lot of heartburn that. That there, that money can replace the negative points. And I have, you know, from the time I'm planning, I've seen where. There aren't enough positive points, like there's not enough trees you can plant. There's not enough, uh. You know, efficiency or herd values that you can get to offset, to make some of these things happen. And now we're throwing that out the window so that you can just write a check and get it. And I just. I want to voice that because I do think this is necessary. I think it's absolutely a good program. I just, I, I have a hard time with it of knowing that someone can come in with a checkbook. And right away the point said we're there, that would have failed the application otherwise. Um, in addition, I also like. I think it's. It can be borderline hypocritical with our responsibility as a town and not retrofitting some of our. Things that violate what we're trying to do. And I think that. We're going to get that time and time again of going, well, what do you guys then do about your. Structures that are not, uh, compliant with the, the stuff that you're putting onto the, to the builders and the architects. And I think that that's kind of separate because, you know, we have to do something and I'm good with that. I just. I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the right reasons and being leaders ourselves in this, in this community. Um, I look at the unintended consequences and I really, you know, and I've already talked about the ones that I, I see. Um, with the fact that a, a checkbook will fix it and give you whatever you need. And I get it, those, that, those funds can be used for great things and that's, that's fantastic. I just. I. Anyway, um, but yes, I do agree with, uh, proceeding with it in a way. Um, I'd love just to. Um, see if there are. Absolutes that we can set in these where. Can't do a fifty thousand square foot, no matter how much money you have, that there, that, yeah, you can pay in lieu up to a certain extent. And then there's absolutes that go from there, um, to, to kind of hedge us a little bit to keeping this from. Just being, you know, where. A lot of money is just going into a pot that is, I'd be spent on grants. So, uh, as far as, uh, the offsets. I, I like Todd's thinking that if you can't do it onsite, then maybe there's a, a premium for the lieu in lieu. Um, and then, um. I don't see a need for, maybe, you know, and maybe in, in this, there's a, a certain number of BTUs at this one, this fire pit. Or the fire pits that where that range is so that. You don't have that, you know, that one that's a two million BTU fire pit that, you know, kind of takes up the whole thing. Where maybe it's, uh, capped at three hundred thousand or something like that. Um. Or that, that's where the, the offsets come in places, maybe not off the number, may, you know, if you can have. Ten little. You know, fifty BTU burners and that's great, or, you know, one. Five hundred, five, you know, fifty thousand or something like that, whatever it is, uh, I'd be good looking at that way as well.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, just. Sorry, Eric, before you go, I saw some head nod with, uh. Jay talked about some absolute in there that wouldn't allow it to exceed. Could everybody get behind something like that?
Yeah.
I would think, okay.
Yeah, I would. That's definitely where I am. I don't like pulling this out of the code either. I, I, I don't like this pay for stuff. It reminds me of the days when we allowed you to fix up a cemetery stone. To get points for your property. It's very similar to that, that the rich get to do what they want. But, you know, normal local building a house, you know. Won't eventually be able to do some of this stuff because we start here, we're going to move down that road that eventually. You know, everybody will be paying for some of what they do. I think that's the only. The only place we can go from this. This is the step one. You know, eventually you're going to have to pay for your outdoor consumption, no matter. Whether you're residential or commercial, and that's not today, but eventually I think we need to move in that direction. I definitely want to see absolutes. We got to put some serious guardrails a- around what we're doing to completely disallow, even at the residential level. Some of these things. You know, I mean, some of these things just should not be allowed and we, they either, you base it on the square footage of the entire project or. I don't know where you go from there, but, um, I think that's really important. That we don't just allow the super rich to do whatever the hell they want, even though it come, the money comes back. I get that part. The better part is that the damage is never done.
Right.
In, in the end, the, the better part is that they have a sixty-four square foot hot tub instead of a five hundred square foot hot tub. No matter what that money goes to and what good use is that money goes to, you're better off having. The smaller, so somewhere in what we're doing, we need to. We need to set a, a hard line somewhere. I don't know where that is either. I think it's going to depend. You know, for some of these commercial projects, I got to tell you, I think the worst thing, and I, I would like to see the, the offset for the gas fireplaces higher. Because out of everything, that is the least benefit. Those things really aren't warm. I mean, I've stood by them. You got to stand right next to them. It's a ton of wasted fuel. You know, even in a pool, you get the benefit, the pool's warm. You know, you're not, you don't have to plow where the snowmelt is, but the, that is just wasted gas. That is complete carbon for zero benefit, other than it's some ambiance, I guess. You know, I'd rather let you. Burn. Really, not cold, but you know, wood. I'd rather you burn wood for, you know, so anyway, um. I, I'd like to make this a little, little more severe on the, on the hard, on the far side of it, so.
Do you think there's anything in, from the REMP money that we could incentivize not hooking up to gas? Like maybe in the residential side? I mean, probably the commercial, it would be too expensive to incentivize that necessarily. But I would love to know because, I mean, we have this gas issue that like we haven't even talked about. Like, we don't have enough gas. We should really just be outlawing this whole thing. So I guess my question is, what I'd really love to do is incentivize it so much that builders get so excited about it. That they actually push it instead of deterring it. And I don't know if that's possible. Completely speaking out of turn, but I would love to know. I would love to at least have looked at that opportunity.
Absolutely. Um, that's a great point and an idea that we haven't really vetted because we've really focused on those existing buildings and not new construction. Um, but we, we can certainly, um, look at both and coming up with some criteria. We wouldn't want to incentivize anything that's required or that you get positive points for under the code to, to your point about double dipping.
Sure.
But how do you create that incentive? And, um, to that point, the, the PUC just made it harder to get the. Um, natural gas line extension for a new construction. They didn't eliminate it, but they made it harder. So hopefully that tips the scales a little bit to people at least considering more electric at, at time of construction. Um, but that's another policy piece at the state level that, um, climate advocates have been working to eliminate. To try and do exactly what you're talking about. So maybe we can mimic, mimic that at the local level.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you. Does that give you enough to start?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, uh, plastic pollution discussion.
All right. Yeah, all right. So, um. This one I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on Kirsten a little bit for as well. Um, but in twenty twenty-one, the Colorado General Assembly passed twenty-one eleven sixty-two, which is the plastics pollution prevention bill. And what it did was create a statewide, um, fee for, for plastic and paper bags with the elimination of plastic bags. Uh, next year. It also, um, created a ban on polystyrene beginning in twenty twenty-four for any. Uh, takeout containers for restaurants. And then it kind of, uh, well, and then it repealed the almighty. Plastic preemption that we've been waiting years and years, um, to get rid of so that we can do some more of our own work here locally. So couple of things, um, in the memo highlights that in general, it also talks a little bit about other plastic bans across the country. Um, I want to draw your attention to Telly Ride though, because they are the most recent and probably one of the more. Comprehensive ordinances that have passed since eleven sixty-two, um, has allowed communities to do so. And their plastic ban includes not only the food containers required by, um, state statute now. But also straws, water bottles, cutlery and miscellaneous plastic, um, provisions. And so. That's kind of the most progressive, uh, plastic pollution. Uh, ordinance in the state of Colorado thus far, and it gets at some of the, um, issues around plastic water bottles. That we've talked about for a long time here in Breckenridge. Um, so we will be coming back with an update to our fee ordinance, um, just to align the requirements, um, with the state. One of the biggest things is a slight change to the tax code, right? That requires, um. First and foremost, it'll be a sixty forty split. When a business remits their bag fee to the town of Breckenridge, we will keep sixty percent. The business gets to keep forty percent. That is different than what we have on the books today. And I think there's a change to the actual tax code required for that.
Oh, so I did go back and look at that and your previous version of the code did exempt the fee from taxation. We, we probably want to change it in our tax code. It was actually in the bag fee ordinance. Um, but yeah, you've got the rest of it correct. The only thing I would add is that the, the ability to ban plastics. The way Telluride does, Telluride wrote into it, consistent with state laws, it cannot be effective until January one, twenty twenty-four. But the other things that you have been talking about with contractors and facilities, we certainly can do now.
And I think it's July twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
In July.
Yeah. There's, there were some drafting errors in the state bill too, so the dates are. We're, we're getting the dates right. Um. So a couple of questions for council, um, before we bring anything back, um, is that, um. You know, we have already banned plastic. And by the way, we are seeing success with that. I was looking at the numbers, um, from the tax, uh, or the, the fee remittance. I should say, um, and the number of bags that are being, um. That have the fee imposed i- is almost a half a million down from when we actually had plastic as well. So. So not only did eliminating plastic work, um, but people are using less bags in general. So that's, that's really good news. I'm sorry?
Over what period is that? Since September?
So September twenty twenty-one. So September twenty twenty-one, so I looked at the whole year of twenty twenty-one, and it was down. But compared to pre-COVID, we were over a million bags that we were collecting fees on, and now we're down to six hundred and change. So it's good, good news. The, the one question related to our existing fee, though, is we are at ten cents for recycled paper bags. Um, I talked to Aspen the other day, and they are increasing from um, ten to twenty cents for the recycled paper bags. Still continuing to try and disincentive. Disincentivize the single use, um. First goes at twenty-five percent, um, Steamboat, Frasier, Telly Ride, they are all in the twenty and twenty-five. Cent range, percent, I think I said that wrong, sorry. Cent range, and so my question is, if we're gonna change. Um, our ordinance, does this council want to increase the fee at all or leave it at ten cents? So that would be my first question.
Jesse, do you want to clarify that the new state law defines retail food establishment, which would include, I think it's broader than what we do now?
So right now, we have banned plastic for restaurants, but we do not require restaurants to collect the fee. The state statute. I believe the CML newsletter that I read actually continues to exempt restaurants from the fee, but they have to comply with the bag ban. Is that right?
Um, so we, we have to look at the definition of retail food establishment.
They use retail food establishments, and then they use restaurants later, and it's very confusing, so we need to align the definitions of that, but. Basically, today, the way we have the code written is that restaurants are exempt from having to pay the fee. We'll need to clarify what the state requirement is. We will have to include the polystyrene ban come January first twenty twenty-four, so that's it. That's something new for us, but we'll, we'll have to do that. Um, the next question would be for restaurants. Um, do you want to take it further than polystyrene and include things like the plastic utensils? Um, condiments, straws. You could either outright ban them, or there's a um. There's a technique called skip the stuff, where um. You would codify the fact that people have to ask for it upon request instead of totally outright banning it.
I like skip the stuff. One of my problems with outright banning of some. Some of that stuff is we don't have a compostable alternative in our community. And that, that's a problem for me, I mean, I would happily. I would happily support everybody having to com-. Compostable, the problem is it's just going in the trash. So until we have a better, better alternative, I think that's a hard. That's a hard line to draw, then you're not giving guests anything.
But you're okay with skip the stuff, like making it, making it so you can't automatically fill the takeout bag with.
Drives me crazy that you have to take the stuff out yourself and hand it back.
Yeah.
Well, that's something we can start right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fantastic.
Okay.
Love that one.
Can, can, can you elaborate on what you're, what you mean by the compostable stuff? Like, there's no place for the guest to.
We don't, we don't compost. Anything that's not food scraps in our community, because we can't. So I can buy compostable silverware and give it to a guest, but that's not compostable, it's just going to the landfill. So I haven't really, we've talked about this, I assume it breaks down quicker in the landfill, but. We don't really know if it's better or not. You know, so that it's a, it's a hard one. The, some of the other stuff you can buy that's wood or whatever is wickedly expensive and.
And garbage.
And gar- you know, garbage. So everything for us is garbage. That's not food scrap, there's no compostable. You know, we don't have a grinder, I think there's an altitude problem at the scrap, so.
The compost doesn't cook hot enough.
Yeah, it doesn't break that stuff down, so that's. It's an issue for me to say you can't do it, but and we have no alternative. Where with plastic water bottles. I'm ready to ban those because there is an alternative. There's an aluminum container alternative that even Aquafina now. Bottles in aluminum, you know, they're not psyched about it. Because it's expensive.
Thanks.
So skip the stuff.
Do it now.
Most importantly, straws.
Do it now.
Or start the campaign to let everyone know we're doing it.
Okay.
I mean, honestly, I think everybody, I think the restaurant community get behind this one.
What, what town facilities have a plastic water bottle sale, just a Riverwalk?
So our vent, the vendors that we work with continue to have.
Like to kick that to the curb.
To them, we're getting it, we're getting them transitioned out quickly and.
And it is um. Wha- what we were looking to do is put. Sort of some finality to it, so we're working with the vendor, we believe they're gonna stop selling the water bottles once they're through their current inventory. But who knows who the next vendor will be, and if we have it, whether it's in our rules or in our code. It's sort of set in stone that way.
I think we should do it, the stuff is available now. It is more expensive. But it is available.
So that's the vendor question, the broader one is community wide, and something that you guys have been talking about. It has been identified in the sustainable BREC plan, um. And, you know, we had, we had a um. Oh, I'm drawing, uh, Boomerang come in and do a presentation on some of the alternatives. Um, Mananalu Water, who was a sponsor of Mountain Towns twenty thirty, did say that um, large. Like the city markets of the world do have quite a lead time in terms of products they, they get on their shelves, not necessarily direct inventory. But just how they source their stuff, and so they, so Mananalu felt like um, giving them some fairly significant lead time. Um, that's what Telly Ride did, they said no more plastic water bottles, um, and which becomes effective July first twenty twenty-four. Like, like Kirsten said, so um. Is that, is that something that this council wants to pursue, um, to be effective July first twenty twenty-four?
I do.
Uh, yeah. It, it is twenty twelve, it's, what's it, twenty-three right now?
What did I say, twenty twenty-four, yeah, I said, okay. Yes, that's a, it's eighteen months, right?
Yes, I haven't done any research on it, when you. You look at. What it takes to make a aluminum bottle versus a plastic, and like, if you were to do two columns on that. Is the aluminum, if it's being thrown in the same trash can as that or recycle can. Uh, is that water bottle? How much better are we?
You know, these, these questions are really hard to answer, because it depends on where you're sourcing and how far it travels and, and all of these different things, so. So just on the material alone, um, you know, aluminum requires mining. Um, it is a, it is a m- metal, um, and, and it, it is a virgin material. In the same way that petroleum is that drives um. The, the plastic manufacturing, right? You, you can also look at the carbon impact of, of sourcing the, the fossil fuels versus a, versus a mineral. And there, there are some differences there depending on how you derive that material, and then the biggest cost comes. Well, I shouldn't say the biggest, I don't know that for a fact, often, some of the heavier costs are also around the transportation, so. You're doing the petroleum. Somewhere, you're manufacturing a bottle somewhere else, and then you're driving that water to Denver, Colorado, and then up to Breckenridge, right? So the aluminum benefits um. Come in the recycling, because if you capture that material, it's infinitely recyclable. Plastic cannot be recycled into another plastic bottle. Multiple times, when you recycle plastic, it's getting made into this tabletop, chairs, benches, Adirondack chairs. Not another plastic water bottle typically. Um, and that's because the polymers break down, aluminum could be recycled over and over again, and that recyclability saves. A ton on resource intensity and energy and even water. So there is this aspect to it that you do need the recyclability. You, you do need good recycling programs in order to realize that benefit, so. Going back to pay as you throw, that's another good reason, but in outright banning the plastic, you will have a significant impact. On the life cycle of that material.
And then I think we can go one step further, and we talked about this at events, and BTO. Is al- has already been thinking about this, um, is really branding. Our Breckenridge water here, like refill your own water bottle. And so I feel like these can go hand in hand, and if we don't get rid of the plastic. Then there's less reason for people to make this other choice. But if they just drink our water a few times, I think they'll realize if I bring my own water bottle, I can do this, and so I think it's gonna have a greater effect. Than just banning the plastics. And I know that beat, I mean, there's nobody better at branding the BTO, you know that, so, you know, we'll rely on them to help us really. Like. Make people realize you don't even have to buy of, an aluminum, aluminum water bottle.
If you do, reuse it a hundred times before it even goes in the recycling bin, I mean, that's the other thing. I know walking around the Mountain Towns event, you know, we, we were trying to demonstrate that we could go plastic free, and we did. And people, we had, we had a couple of cases left over, because it wasn't, people weren't getting multiple water bottles. They were using the same one they got right at the beginning, right, so um, there's definitely a lot of learning, I'm not saying that it's perfect, but it. When you have good programs and you capture that recycling, aluminum is infinitely better than plastic.
I think it'd be really interesting to see if we could, if we do roll this out, to do something similar to what we do with the bags, brand the, our own. Bottle somehow, I feel like visitors love this, um, the bags. But I'm wondering, what does this look like codified? Is this banning the sale of these bottles, does it have to be under X liters? Or just generally, what would this look codified, I still know a little.
You know, and looking at telly rides, it's pretty straightforward, I mean, there, um, I have it pulled up here, and it's like. One, one sentence, you know, no business or commercial establishment sell, shall sell or otherwise offer plastic beverage bottles.
What's a two-liter bottle of Pepsi look like?
Looks like a.
Metal?
Looks like cans, people are buying cans.
On the water bottle side, most of them allow for gallons or more. So if you buy a gallon or more, like you're going camping or something, that that, those are allowed, we're talking about the, the individual, you know, so. So there might be this like twenty-four ounces and less kind of. If that's what you're targeting, um, but a lot of the, a lot of the plastic. Uh, water bottle bans allow for gallons or more, so you're not, if you go all in on beverages, not just water. Um, like gallons of milk are still okay, for example.
Shouldn't drink that much soda anyway.
Yeah, you're a big jug of Mountain Dew.
Or you shouldn't drink a gallon of milk at a time. Either of those good for you, like, that quantity.
That, would that be the, the intention of single serve or?
Well, I think we talk about it, I mean, I think when staff goes away and comes back with an ordinance, that's when we have the discussion. And staff will come back with more information on. This is what's available today as far as Gatorade and all this. All this other stuff, because there's a lot more to this than just Aquafina.
I read somebody did twenty-one ounces or less. Who did that?
Uh, that I linked to in the memo?
Yeah, but in, in general, is everybody good with July one twenty twenty-four, and then we'll. Jesse will come back with an ordinance and more.
One thing you could do is just do the broad ban that Telluride has, seeing it's effective July one twenty twenty-four. Knowing that if we learn a lot between now and then, we can, yeah, we have plenty of time.
And at the, in that same one, we can do the uh, skip the stuff.
It's written in most jurisdictions is upon request, so you don't give the cutlery unless it's requested by the customer.
Address our town facilities. Jesse, the uh, lobbyist from the Colorado Restaurant Association is emailing me a lot of it. He, he agrees that the ordinance, state ordinance is very confusing. When it comes to restaurants, so he, they've got a whole memo on it, and I'll send it to you, forward that to you, he just said.
I would say about restaurants, if we get to a place where restaurants need to pay, you need to allow the vendor to pay the fee. And not make it a collection from the user.
Yeah, they don't, uh, that's not even contemplated, so I think you could go about.
That's, that's a big deal, because.
Not most restaurants, so we'll have to, there's a de- definition of retail food establishment, and certain ones are exempted, so.
I, I'm not against the, the payment of the fee, I don't, I don't have any problem with that, the tough part is. Somebody's just paid a bill in a restaurant, they're walking out the door, they say, can I have a bag, can I have ten cents, is the hard. Yeah, nobody carries a dime in their pocket anymore, so um. If we can allow the vendor.
The state law.
As long as we can allow the vendor to pay any fee that we create, then that's, I think that's fine.
Having the eighteen monthly time to be able to have a master plan of sorts of how would I set up our guests for success? Of having the refill stations, additional ones, how to have a branded water bottle that we sell at cost. At the welcome center, at the golf course, at the ice rink, where they can get these for whatever we pay for them and, or, or whatever. And refill them and keep them and use them as a keepsake, like, I, I think that a year and a half i-. Is great to have that plan in place, to be able to make that uh, effective.
I'm sorry, just one clarifying question on the fee amount, did you want to stay at ten cents for paper or change that?
Twenty.
I'll jump in on that one, um, I'd love to see it higher and, and layer in like a reusable bag that's the most affordable, it's a like a buck. And then make the single use higher than that, and then the other piece is, could you put in, like, I've got twenty-five reusable bags at the house. Could you put like a, a reusable bin at City Market, so I can drop off my extra twenty bags?
Breck Grand Vacations just reached out to me yesterday about a program like that, so.
I get those things all over the place.
So I think hire, hire for reusable, but make that the most affordable option, so we incent folks to have this bag that they. If you're gonna buy one, you got one that you can use a hundred times, and then make the single use. Expensive.
That's challenging with like City Market, which is where the majority of our bags.
I get it.
Come from, because they sell their own bag, of, not the, but the reusable.
And we sell our reusable bags at cost. We don't, we don't upsell ours at all.
What's that cost?
Uh, what are we at, one fifteen? About a twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we keep it simple and just do twenty cents for a bag.
Right up, yeah.
Enough though?
Twenty-five, though, because at least then it would be the same as Frisco. Isn't it twenty-five?
It is twenty-five in Frisco.
Yeah, that bags are way better than Frisco's.
Talking about the, the recycled paper bag, right, right, not the reusable bag, this is just if you don't.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
You get that.
Twenty-five, I'm fine.
Twenty-five?
Okay.
We're, yeah, we got hurt. We got all kinds of time. This is gonna be quick, Stilson Property Workforce Discussion.
They have addressed every single one of our questions.
Not to my satisfaction, however.
Close.
No.
But then it was sixty-three and now sixty-one.
Maybe in thirty-five.
But.
Leader bottles, which put momentos in and they explode. That's what a two-liter bottle is.
That's right, exactly.
That's the last time I bought one of those.
Change the master plan on that property and make it, why bother? Doesn't seem like we're.
Except they dump all their shit.
You're jumping right.
Yeah, but, yeah, I just don't think it's enough.
I mean.
Kind of like, uh, it's greenwashing, right, it's just.
Well, setting up on here, before you jump into Stilson, I wanna just talk master planning for a brief second. With you all and see what more, if anything, you, I think we can come back with better. Stuff, so you, I mean, Lori put in your package, you see Block eleven, you see, when she talks about Stilson. She'll talk about this potential for a phase two, and I think that's one of the things we need to hear from you. When it comes to Block eleven. When we were out there today. You kind of got, hopefully, the idea of conceptually what we're looking at out there. So I think, you know, if. Tell us at what level you want to see Block eleven broke down even be- uh, better, and it's something we can come back. In, in a couple of months, we can work, I think Norris was doing some work with us on eleven before. Block eleven, and we can probably get in there and really.
Rick, I think the important part is to designate where the five hundred parking spaces go, so that the council understands.
What could be left after that?
What that area looks like, and then we're gonna have to have some kind of discussion about. You know, the actual number that gets used right now is in that probably thousand range on multiple weekends, what, what's the discussion there about? What that does to the community if the limit is five hundred? I mean, that's a really important piece, it's hard to have that without knowing what that looks like from an aerial. I mean, that's a really important piece. It's hard to have that without knowing what that looks like from an aerial view on that. And how we're going to master plan the housing component with that parking component. Does everybody agree with that? Because we may have to talk about the skier being part of a garage concept since the first 500 is on us, the second 500 is really what they need. So.
I know, I, I, I just want to make sure. I know, uh, Carol had raised a question when we're talking about Stillson that it's harder. I mean, she wants to see the bigger picture of what we have going on. So if you have any other questions relative to block 11 or that, you know, I want to address those.
Yeah, no, I think what Eric brought up is the largest concern, like parking and then what do we have to work with? So I think what Lori provided hits that and lets us see holistically, what are our big chunks less left for housing, which is that bit on block 11 and then Stillson.
Yeah, which we still, even with parking, we hope we're still going to hit that 80 to 100 single family.
I, yeah. I hear you and I fundamentally agree, but my, I mean, I kind of feel like trading some land out there for parking for in-town development to, to incent, you know, that being in the right place. I think we want to keep that card in our pocket and, um, that could take a while.
It, it's hard for us to, um, even think about this without seeing what it looks like on the ground though.
Yeah.
You know, and I just want to see what those, what's 500 look like? What's a thousand look like?
There you go. And, and yeah.
That's all I'm saying is just so we can understand where we are. And then on the Stillson, I'm definitely going to want, as we go through this discussion, at some point with this second phase, if there's some horse trading about the second phase, I would like to come back with a master plan that codifies what we're going to end up talking about.
But I don't think it can slow down turning Suzanne and her team loose. I think we have.
I'm talking about the second phase, if.
Let's see where the group is on phase two here. All right.
Can we also consider the utility line, like clean up the maps so that it doesn't show that here's block 11, we can build housing all around here. But also there's this utility line that goes straight through.
Only will take that utility line into consideration.
Definitely.
Okay.
Well, good afternoon, council. Um, we're happy to be here to discuss the Staples project. We are hoping that third time's a charm here. Um, so from the feedback of the last two meetings, um, we've definitely addressed a lot of the changes and I just want to go ahead and summarize those. And then I'm going to turn it over to the Staples development team to answer any of the more detailed questions. So originally we had brought you 63 units. We've reduced that now down to 61 units. However, we did maintain those five single family homes. We increased the parks and open space within the subdivision and that included adding a 30 foot bio swale. Um, we'll have some more photos of that. So you guys can, uh, get a better idea of what that would look like. But that will help with the detention and it'll also create a buffer around those, the outer loop of those homes between public works. And we will be heavily landscaping that with, um, larger trees. We might bring them, some of them closer to the homes. Uh, basically as a good shield for noise and views. Um, it'll be a stepped area that will also allow a trail to go through, um, for dog walking purposes and things like that. Um, we've addressed parking and garage concerns. We've increased the visitor parking numbers, um, added some good trail connections throughout the neighborhood. Uh, we plan to continue those conversations with open space as we get further down the road with those trails. Um, we're also working to maximize solar gain and window placements. Uh, again, I'm going to let the development team dive into that in more detail. And to tie into some of the previous discussions, um, I do want to remind everyone that this is a net zero and carbon neutral project. And we're very excited to uh, partner with this development team who, uh, together encompasses hundreds of years of experience in residential development. Um, and they've built thousands of homes throughout Colorado. So we're excited about their sustainability focus and we're confident this would be the right team to approach this project. Um, and we hope to move forward.
Hello, council. Jeffrey, I thought long and hard about the pants I was going to wear today. Sweater, then I thought how many I had and I was like, man, I'm happy with them all. Um, hi. If you haven't read Jeffrey's article, this newspaper, check it out. It's a good one. Um, I laughed out loud. My husband was like, what are you doing? Uh, Lena Scott with Norris Design. Um, thanks for having us again. Just to build on the changes to the plan since our last meeting, I'll start with units. We're at 61 units total. Those range in size from 1700 to 2400 square feet. We're at almost 80% three bedroom and four bedroom. So we've really significantly changed the makeup of the unit types that we have on this property. Five of those are single family with four beds. 43 are duplex in-town homes with three beds. So really hitting the spectrum um, of housing affordability with a three bedroom product, which is definitely something we heard from you and we wanted to highlight that. The parking side of things, uh, we have addressed your garage concerns. And in addition to that, um, we have 175 total bedrooms proposed with the 61 units. Um, with that, we have 203 parking spaces, some in garage, some on driveway and some visitor spaces that are located on the plan that you can see where some head in parking is shown. That is in excess of code, um, and we think hits that target of what you're looking for to make sure that this neighborhood is being parked to accommodate families and guests, uh, safely.
Toys.
Toys. Sure. Yes. Lots of toys. Open space. Um, we're at 3.6 acres of open space. That's public open space. That does not include the open space on each individual lot. That's at over 40% of the site on an eight and a half acre site ish, 8.4. Um, we think that that's a really great amount of usable open space for residents to take, um, advantage of the views and also create safe places for kids to play. We have three proposed pocket parks, two in the center green between the town homes, um, in the single family and duplex homes. And then one, um, that can create a little bit more of a fun hillside area. Um, that's shown with a little number three on the south end of the site there on, off horseshoe circle. Um, those pocket park sizes are, um, you, there was a graphic in your packet. If you saw that compared some of the scale of the adjacent greens to, um, the greens proposed here. And so, uh, we feel really comfortable with, um, what we're creating and know we can create some really nice usable spaces that are still environmentally sustainable from a water use perspective with that area. Um, the bio swale itself, um, that Melanie touched on, that would include a trail. Um, and we have some images that we can show what a bio swale does, but it helps to reduce runoff volume on site, improves water quality, um, can facilitate groundwater recharge and infiltration and facilitate evapotranspiration. So all the things that we want to see in the community. And as Melanie mentioned, we also would want to create a really nice buffer, especially adjacent to the rear of the home. So that the homeowner, when they're looking out, they're not looking at all the utilities necessarily, but are having a nice privacy, um, screening area from their home to the open space zones. Um, on the buffer side, on the Staples road, uh, we definitely want to incorporate trees and also in alignment with Thrive's carbon neutral um, home product. We'll definitely look at carbon sequestration with our tree selection. Um, but we also want to ensure safety. And so along Staples road, we want to make sure that we don't have too many trees because we really do want to keep um, open visibility for kids running around and ensuring that we're just thinking about that from a safety side. So that side of the road may not look as like as an extensive a buffer when we get into that phase of work, but that would be why. Um, on the trail side, we have internal trails running through with the town homes, um, that have also been changed into clusters of three to be more in alignment with the adjacent neighborhood and provide more end units. So that's part of the reasoning for that. Um, we have the 10 foot path along Staples drive that connects from the bike park all the way down to the transit. Um, the bus stop, uh, we have soft surface trail connections to, um, the bike park. And then, um, if we are able to move forward, which we hope we can, we'll work extensively with open space just to make sure we are getting all those connections right, based on existing user groups and how they move through the property and access the adjacent trails now. On the traffic calming side of things, um, just as we have in, in other, um, communities in Brack, we work really, um, hand in hand with public works to make sure we're using the appropriate solution. We have shown a chicane, graphic diagram on this map, um, which is basically like enhanced serpentining of roadway, but to slow you down. Um, if that's not the right solution, there are many more that we can, uh, work with, uh, with engineering and we'll make sure to do that um, with the project because we know the importance of safety within the community. Ultimately, the plan has been designed to think about ourselves as neighbors. You know, creating a setback from the adjacent homes, trying to put, implement, um, safety measures with the crosswalks and try other traffic calming elements on the road. Um, and also thinking about how we're connecting to the road and how we're not attaching to other people's alleys. That was something from a good neighbor perspective on our part on the design side that was intentional. Other than that, we are very excited, um, about the opportunity and Suzanne may have a couple more comments.
Did you want to flip through your pictures of the?
Oh, yeah. Uh huh. Oh, some bio swales.
Yeah.
This is one that we actually, cause it's not full of water very often. This is down in, um, Rock Creek. But we actually were able to use it for seating area. So it became multiple use. Um, and we do have a hillside in ours. I thought that was a really pretty good, um, example image because we're coming down from a hill from where the homes are. Um, this is one that doesn't have as many trees in it and is obviously pretty green, but um, I think one thing with a bio swale is it's not always going to look as manicured, but it's definitely really good for the environment. Uh, but this one's nice. It has a trail adjacent to it. Uh, and if there's opportunities where we're adjacent to other sidewalks or it gets narrower, we may incorporate additional rock work. Um, we have a few extra boulders on that side. Um, this is down at the
Free boulders.
Douglas County Fairgrounds, but this isn't a parking lot. And so, um, we understand, you know, we'll pick specific plants, um, that are for our specific microclimate in this zone. But, uh, these are all Norris design projects. So, you know, we can implement that well. Um, and yeah, we want, we are excited about, um, implementing that into the project. Cool. Thank you. Sure. Um, good afternoon. And I, I wasn't going to speak, but based on all the sustainable stuff that was brought up, I thought maybe I should just reiterate some of the stuff that we've actually been working on since the meeting before last. Um, and, uh, I also wanted to let you guys know that we don't have outdoor fireplaces and no driveway heat. So I think we're looking at there. Uh, I just wanted to touch on our net zero carbon neutral goals. Um, and, uh, we've been working schematically on building designs uh, with thrive our builder and they're working with Sun Street Solar on the solar design. Um, REG has been kind of simultaneously working on, um, some mechanical system ideas. Uh, domestic hot water is particularly difficult when you go to electric and it's electric usage. So we've got a bunch of options there that they've presented us with. Um, we are mirroring and flipping floor plans. Cause as you can see, as this kind of comes around these, these crazy corners, the horseshoe. Which has been hit maybe one, one time too many by the blacksmith at this point. Uh, we, we're having to flip and mirror designs to, to make the solar work, the active solar, passive solar. It, it's a tricky site. It's not like, you know, it's not a grid. So where you're like, okay, it's all the same. We're going to do the same design on every house. Now we're going to have to mirror and flip as we go around. Um, and we do have a lot of different design opportunities because of the uphill downhill flat sites. What else here? Um, REG is studying our solar heat gain and our energy usage as well. And we've been looking at all kinds of crazy stuff, um, as far as appliances and all, all kinds of stuff, um, in the mechanical realm. Um, we also, uh, are, have been looking at some accessible designs on some of the units. Uh, it turns out one of the grants that Melanie's looking at, uh, requires some accessible units, which feeds right into, I think Carol, you were the one who brought that up in the first place. So, um, we definitely will be having some accessible units. I can't say at this point exactly how many. Um, but, but we will be doing that. Um, and then we also just started looking at all kinds of different, um, products. Uh, there are some more affordable triple pane windows, which thrive just informed me of recently and, and some other products that, that I didn't really realize they had affordable, uh, opportunities and, and possible uses in this project. Um, so anyway, that's sort of where we stand on the fund sustainable, sustainable front. Yeah. One thing we forgot to mention also was the updated design for the compost recycle center that has a loop drive. So it's easier for all residents to access. Um, and then. No one has to drive into the subdivision to get to it. Right. Yeah. And then, um, on the acreage side of things, this space is shown at 8.4 acres. The total Stillson property is 38. Um, the original RFP was 412, which included some of this, but as of, um, this design, this is 8.4. That phase two alternative looked at adding about three and a half acres in total to the development area, which would occur here.
That's all I've got.
Questions? Then when it comes to being carbon neutral and, uh, net zero, remind me, there's no, there's no gas being run to.
No.
How did, have you spoken to Excel or do you already know? Are there, are there limitations on what the electrical grid can hold and can, can do for, for a project this size? If there is a power outage, which we have on a regular basis, what effect does it take to put them back online? Uh, I just, I don't know even the, the questions to ask when it comes to capacity with the electrical, uh, grid and being all electric on it, on a development this size.
So Melanie has been talking to Excel Energy because the town has a little more pull. Um, because I think recently you guys gave Excel Energy something. I'm not sure what. So it's, it's sort of like, we padded your back, now pat our back. Um, so I'm pretty sure she, she has more information than I do. I know it's a, it's a great location for power because you're right next to that substation, which is kind of below Eric's place. So.
We've asked that question. We've asked that question and eventually it will, and they will need space to add other substations, whether it's in Summit County at some point. Um, because you know, if you start shifting away, you will, you will shift the demand to that. Uh, but, uh, it's, I don't think it says, um, we did not get the impression that it is as immediate of a crisis as the gas.
But isn't this some, it's net, net zero and carbon neutral. So why do we need XL? Isn't this?
Shedding, it's still using electric. You're just offsetting the use.
To the grid still. And, and so like when snow is on your solar panel for a week, you have to draw. And then in the summer, when it's just cranking, you're giving it back.
Do you have any more questions?
I don't.
When, when we were talking about the hot water as an issue, you, you, you have to use gas or hot water. You said.
No, we don't have to use gas. We can use, there are electric heat pump exchangers. And, and maybe thrive could explain this better than I could, because I haven't done this before. But, um, it's, it's definitely possible to do it with electric. It's just takes a lot of energy. So we're trying to figure out the best way in the most affordable fashion to make this happen.
I have a timer on my shelf.
Nice. I like that.
Probably 30 seconds, but.
I have a question about snow shedding, um, with the shed roofs, metal roof, I assume.
Maybe.
I, yeah, I would assume so with those pitches.
So what's the plan? What's the plan for the southern exposures that are going to shed, but not immediately?
We'll definitely have snow guards. 100%. Absolutely. Yes, we have to.
I got when my roof slides.
It's bad.
Great train coming through the living room.
Yeah.
And because you have some paths and stuff below those, I want to make sure that you consider.
Yeah. Good point.
No questions?
No questions?
Yeah, on horseshoe alley, why does it cut all the way through? I know maybe for the phase two, but even that section where it cuts. I know maybe for the phase two, but even that section where it cuts. The two duplexes there. Is there a reason?
We have extra guest parking in that location. We're also thinking if there was a phase two that we could have their fire access potentially.
But even the section that connects the horseshoe circle to the horseshoe alley. Just a flow of traffic or why would the triplexes not just dead end the parking lot?
I'm pretty sure the fire department would want you to have to.
We can only extend a hundred and fifty feet without a turnaround. And so. And a turnaround is an extensive amount of payment. And so we want every bit of pavement to be usable. So you know, this is seven spaces, you know, you could turn it this way if you wanted to and reduce some spaces. We're just trying to maximize that guest parking based on our conversations.
Hundred and seventy five bedrooms. How, how many you said, how many bookings was?
Two hundred and three.
Two oh three.
And then there's visitors parking as well.
Included code in the Melanie has a really good breakdown in her, in her. There's yes, twenty eight guest spaces. Code would require a hundred and fourteen total. So we're eighty nine in excess with two hundred and three. Actually get negative points for being overparked.
You just passed.
Different use. All right, let's go to comments. Who wants to start?
Awesome work. I love, yeah, kind of the, the tweaks and adjustments. So thank you. Thanks for taking a look at the side by side garages and getting back to me on that and doing some math. So thanks for investigating that. I really like the. Expanded parking just from worked on Smith Ranch and C N L, the Wellington and Lincoln Park live like. I think the one spot per bedroom is awesome. The extra parking is great. Thank you for adding the trail that kind of wraps around and connects to the Wellington. Would love to maybe even see an expansion there where it wraps around and connects to that ellipse. Between twenty and twenty three, somewhere over in that zone, just. And, and maybe getting both act away in with some more dog walking loops.
Yeah, we had a, a trail there and then we got feedback that from bikers that that was going to be dangerous. Like it's just so close to bike jumps and stuff.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I, yeah, I think looking at. Additional non-network connected walking trails because we're.
Open space will be great.
So that'll be great. Yeah, good work. I think it's evolved nicely and look forward to getting moving forward.
I, thanks for all you've done in changing this and evolving this. I. I think each change has made it a better prod, um, project. Yeah, I, I really like, I mean, I think we're seeing that the bigger units are in demand and, and so. Seeing such a high percentage of bigger units is great. And I think they're more spacious as well. When I saw the comparisons to the, to the neighboring neighborhoods. I'm not, um, locked in on phase two, you know, I think. It's great that we looked at it to see if it could be done, but I don't think we need to do any more than that and don't even need to show it. And. If we want to do some master planning. Yay or nay with it. I'm fine with that too, but I wouldn't want to slow this down. I hope that tonight we can give Suzanne and her team the, the green light to get going. Cause uh, this is a, it's a great project to my mind.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with everything that's been said. The only thing I do want to add is when we were, when we've done some planning in the Wellington portion. This, having this horseshoe alley come right out with people's light, you know. Headlights into that. I don't know if it's a duplex or whatever. They're going, that's going to be a big complaint for that house. So if we can just make sure that we provide some trees, I know that you're. Not wanting to put too many trees, but maybe on that other side, that would be a good location for it. But. I do think we have to plan that because that will be an impact to that homeowner.
That's great though. Watching what you brought up today.
I had, um, I know this is comments, but I did have one question. This might be silly on A one, three, which is a. Page, I don't know. It's your A one, three. Can you explain that to me really quick? I didn't understand it.
So basically, so basically if I can grab.
It's, it's a scale comparison, Jay.
Cause it looks important.
So like this is this.
I felt that.
This is the park in Lincoln Park we were talking about last time. And I just took that and overlaid it on a couple of these areas so that you could see, wow, this is a lot longer.
Okay. So you're not looking at Xing those. I thought we were deleting them. Wonderful. Yes, thank you. And, and thank you for explaining that to me. I, I knew it was important. I just wasn't sure why. I think the, the reduction of the units, like the fact that you and your team. Were able to take the comments from this council and translate them into actual useful. You know, improvements. I think that that's amazing. And you know, from the reduction of the units, the, the parking. The bioswells, the landscaping, the trails, the additional open space, the, uh, the traffic calming. And the upgraded recycling compost. I just think all those items have made this so much better and I'm just, I'm very, very impressed and very. And so just so thankful for your time and patience through this process. Cause I know that it's, it could be tough. And fully supportive of the project.
I'm going to derail this love train.
You can, if you want, then I'll come in next again. This has always been a great project needing a community need. We know we need for sale units at this AMI. The project came in strong with those carbon neutral goals that we love. And the team is excellent. I think we all have full faith in the development team. And it does our role to vet this, make sure it meets as many community needs as possible. And. Thanks for hearing us adapting to you and staff. I think. The edits that have been made really strengthen this project to meet. Community need, needs, the parking problems we can avoid from Wellington. Landscaping buffer, adding trails, open space, traffic calming measures, the composting. I think it's a really. Strong plan, especially the unit types and sizes that we now have in this version. So I'm fully supportive of this project. With phase two, at this time, I would be not supportive of phase two, based on some town finances. Other projects we have in the works, buy downs. So I am not supportive of phase two. And with that, I'd like to see kind of the end of horseshoe alley being reconfigured somehow, a minor edit. But in general, fully supportive, thanks to the development team, staff. I am having a love affair with this project now.
Okay, shit sandwich time. You know, um. Yeah, I, I, I think, I think this thing is pissa. And, and it would be even more piss if it's in another spot. I am concerned about traffic on Wellington. I'm concerned the traffic on Riley. I think it's a, a, a little, a little big. There again, it's like really well designed, the net, the net zero, carbon neutral, all that stuff. And I, yeah, and I, I like the Feng Shui. That said, so yeah, I, 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 I am concerned it's good, what it's going to, how it's going to change that whole area. As far as the impact on the Lincoln Meadows Wellington. But I, I will acquiesce on all that. I'll kind of alleviate my fears on all that. Because I do think this would be a good place to live. Uh, but I, I do think it's going to affect, affect that, that valley. I can, I can support it if we can codify that this will be the only thing there. You know, in, until, uh, you know, until I'm dead and gone. I'm certain, I don't know, what time is it now? But yeah, I, I think, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not excited about, uh. Uh, I'd like to master plan it to the fact that maybe we can dedicate some of the land to open space, to public works. And then this will be a wonderful place to live and down the road, we won't be impacting this place to live. With other places that we develop. So I can support this if we can make this, say this is one and done.
Yeah, I'm with Jeffrey on that. I, if the count, I would, I would agree to, you know, I still think it's too much. But I would agree since the, honestly, the wind's blowing that way. Anyway, I would agree. To go along with the crowd if we could get a, a master plan amendment to make. The area to the west of this, um, some designation and it does, doesn't have to go concurrent with. They can go off and do their stuff and we can work on the master planning as we go. I, one other thing I, as you talk to the trails. As you talk to BOSAC about the trails, I think it's important. That the neighborhood has almost its own separate dog walking loop that doesn't necessarily collect a connect. So if the reason that we didn't want to connect around the, the bottom of the circle is. Because it's not bikeable, it should just be a non-biking walking trail. You know, there's already a lot of use on the Wellington trail. There's a lot of inter bikers and dog walkers and it gets barely heated sometimes. Cause there's a lot of bikers that think they're going pro next week and they need their Strava time to prove it. So that kind of stuff happens on what I consider to be a no wake trail. I don't want to impact that anymore than we should. So even if we could give some. Some of the land where that trail cuts up to the Wellington trail for, for walkers. I think that'd be great to keep that. Just to give them an opportunity to have a trail to go take your dog that's longer that you're not. Jumping on where, you know, Rankin's coming by screaming. But in high, um, you know, other than that Suzanne, I, I, you know, I appreciate everything your team has done. With, you know, in particular, the parking, that was really a big deal for me at the last phase because I know what happens over in the Wellington and. While I agree, we try to get other people to not park as much. It's different if, if it's different when you talk about it. When you're talking about guests versus locals, and this is obviously local housing. We need to really be cognizant of the fact that, you know, we have trouble in the Wellington now with all these kids that have grown up and. The one thing you hear is why isn't there more parking in the Wellington? Because David O'Neil promised us we wouldn't need it. That's why it's not. That was wrong, but now I appreciate everything you've done and the concessions you've made. I, I would still. I would still change stuff. I wouldn't have as many duplexes. I would have less, less density, but I, you know. We are, we are where we are and I.
Can we do the one and done? I mean, I think there's four that are there. No phase two. So.
I'm, I'm fine.
Get it now.
I'll be asleep tonight.
I mean, that makes me. Listen, some other council could come and undo the master plan as you know, but it's just one more. It's just one more hurdle to overcome. That then this neighborhood could say, hey, why are you going to build more stuff next to us if they?
There's no telling what freaks will be up here in eight years.
Kelly. Uh, with that, what do we need tonight? Is it, or is that, is that enough for you, Lori?
We, uh, we just need to know that the majority of you, because we are going to go full Steven head.
And the verbiage on the Stillson, you had enough with the questions. I'm sorry, I lost.
My Stillson or the?
On a, a block eleven.
Yeah, I think we have enough to give us some time to come back.
Okay. Great.
It's not a huge time sensitive issue right now. But we'll do some stuff in the next couple of months with that.
Okay.
Can I just say one more?
Thank you.
It sounds like you guys are already considering it, but we talked about it out at the site visit today is the passive solar and how important that is for people living there. Because even in the Wellington neighborhood, you know, like any of the neighbors who face west, the mountains get these really nice heated up homes all day. And then everybody that faces the opposite on the opposite side of the green. Because it's like a stairwell on the backside and a bathroom, it just completely rolls off any passive solar. So it sounds like you guys are already looking at that.
Yeah, we're kind of, we're flipping unit designs and, and just trying to work with that site. That site is particularly difficult because of that horseshoe loop. But so some folks won't get ideal, you know, scenario due south.
So long as you're considering it.
Yes, we are considering it for sure.
All right, recreation aquatics area renovation update. Were you going to say something?
Sounds important.
That doesn't preclude it. Changing it, but.
What kind of pool are we building today?
A more expensive one. Good afternoon. Uh, John and I are here to do a brief presentation on this. You all have the memo before you. Couple of things to add. Uh, well, in general, the, um, we're back here to request additional five hundred thousand dollars. Based on a, a, a better bid, a better company with a better bid. The original bid we got was May of twenty two. And that company has since said, we're not able to handle this project. So we've had a, we've had progressive aquatics come and visit several times. Given us a, sharpened their pencils and gotten a much better bid, which is why the number you see there is higher. Number one. Number two is we did listen to what you all suggested at the retreat, which is consider future, uh, some kind of. Outdoor type water facility, aquatics facility in the, in the back zone there where we. Potentially in the future. So if we can lay those utilities now while we have everything torn up, torn up and open. That did add to the cost of the, of the project. And then lastly, we do, we did not include in the original bid. Was not considered to remove entirely the existing indoor hot tub, which is something that we have included in this bid. And it does require handwork versus the machines just coming in and jackhammer. And so that does add to the bid. So. Uh, in total, uh, the number that we have that, um, with progressive aquatics is, um, is two point eight, which is five hundred thousand dollars more. That was, that was currently discussed. We did receive a second bid after, uh, you give huge credit to John because. First off, it's been really hard to get companies that are available and willing to bid. Um, and in fact, um, Vortex, who does the big slides and the, the features that we're trying to install was. Surprised, I shouldn't say that. It was O L C, um, the company that designed the, you know, original plans that we have. They were surprised that we were even able to get someone who could do the work and they, they, uh, recommended highly progressive aquatics as well. So we were able to beat the bushes and this is really on, this is really John's effort to finally get another bid. Again, we talked to over ten different companies to find that. We got one other bid just today. Um, and that number came in at two point six. Um, and that company, we don't have as much faith in their ability to pull off the project as we do with progressive aquatics. So that number, as we were referenced in here, the second bid was being pursued. We didn't have it in time for the memo. Uh, that number did come in about two hundred thousand dollars less than this. It did not include design work. Um, and so pretty quickly you get right back up in there. We, um, if, if council does approve this, we will go back to progressive and suggest that. There may be a way for them to sharpen their pencils. We'll keep the two point eight number, but, and use it as a not to exceed figure. But if we can get them. To come down a little bit on the number, I think we'll be really comfortable with progressives work from here. So that's the quick and dirty version, John.
Closure time. I know we talked about that.
Six months, um, beginning in August.
August to February roughly.
Great.
And.
Better than.
Definitely spring break.
That's just for the kids pool?
Correct.
We would have a, uh, probably four to six week closure of the lap pool. But we'd have full reciprocity of, uh, with Silverthorn during that time.
Cool. So we're really here to get any questions you all have, and then ultimately look at that extra five hundred thousand dollars.
Just curious with, you know, after our discussion tonight about, you know, outdoor pools and. And that, is that something that? We want to even wire. Uh, as this was a point that I brought up when we were talking about it, I'm just thinking now.
Can I, yeah, can we dress up a little bit? So the way, so the idea is to get utilities there. So we have those options in the future. Once things are open, getting those utilities in. Obviously is a, it's not a huge cost, but it's additional, you know, forethought in that, in that regard. If we were to look at plans and we have, we haven't unveiled those and gotten people too excited. But if we were to look at that, it wouldn't be you, your typical standard body of water that needs to be heated. Um, and in fact, it would be more of a, um, again, it was more of a slide into a splash pad kind of thing. So it would require a lot less. Heating, a lot less.
Yeah, no deep pools. Just.
It would require a separate, um, pump system, which does require a fair bit of energy, but that would all be. You know, part of that project. Once again, if it was tied in pretty easily, but we would have to make those decisions when we came there. So I think the vision. From our side of things wouldn't be the classic, hey, there's a big pool deck and people are sitting during the summertime around a pool. It would be more of a splash pad with some features that would have kind of an element where families could watch their kids play. But it would not be a pool in part because we won't, we would not have to staff a splash pad that doesn't have a. A splash pad that doesn't have a body of water to it. If that makes sense. And from a staffing standpoint, that's the design that we would recommend if we were to go down that.
Biscuit slide into a trough.
A swale with mud, warm mud.
How's everybody feel about this?
Great.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good you picked up that hot tub because you know what that does.
Oh, you know, I thought you talked to him earlier about this, so we didn't have to hear it tonight. All right, statewide land use policy discussion. Um. So I have had, uh I was contacted by Polis's. Staff to have a Zoom meeting with uh four people that work for him. Um there's sustainability coordinator and then some people that are more policy directions. He is looking. To push some policy forward. That will incentivize developers to build affordable housing. They wanted to talk to us because we have built a lot of housing and they understand that we would probably have some problems with some of the things they're. Wanting to do and those are things like. Um ADUs by right, which I didn't think we would have a problem with. That means that. Whether you have an ADU regulation or not in town, you could build an ADU. Duplexes by right, which I do personally have a problem with, so.
And that's single family lot, you're automatically allowed to have a duplex. Is that what that?
That's pretty much as long as it's, I'm assuming it's as long as it's deed restricted or there's some you know, cap on it to make. There's gotta be an affordability component, because that's what this is all about. You know, we I I discussed with them the whole, you know, floor area ratio thing, but. Even beyond that, you're talking about putting two families on a lot instead of in a one family per lot neighborhood. Told them we probably not very supportive of that, but also talking about multifamily by right. In areas where there's transit, which is a lot of our town. They sort of changed it to urban area near transit, but you know, I I think we need to stay. On guard with this. The other thing that I really um raised my hackles was no parking minimums. So you don't need to provide parking as a developer. You could just build housing with no parking. That doesn't work at all. And I explained the discussion that we've been having with the stables property and what goes on in Wellington, some of our other places. So. You know, pretty much in the end, I I sort of said, look, this is a one, you're you're looking for one fit solution for a big thing and. You know, at the very least, we'd like exemption for some of the smaller communities like. Aspen and Telluride and Crested Butte and Breck that have built a lot of housing. Um so you know, we're on their radar. I offered any help they need. Uh and then Carol set up a meeting between the two of us and Speaker McCluskey. And she heard our concerns on on these things. So she's now well versed in how we feel about um what they're doing. The governor has a real sore spot about Lake Hill. He was in the Senate when Lake Hill was passed and it was passed as part of a larger package with the help of the state of Colorado. This doesn't fix Lake Hill because Lake Hill is owned by the county. Not a not a private developer, private developer is not going to go in there and do multifamily by. Right by right or any of that stuff. So um that's where it's been. I've had, I've had a bunch of conversations now. I just had another conversation. With a woman from Polis's office that actually called me to read the part of his speech where they're mentioning Breck and. County and then I hammered some of these things back to her because she ends up talking to that crew. I want to make sure that they. Continually hear that we're not okay with some of these techniques, because in the end, I think all it's doing is. Making it super easy for developers to come in and build housing. That's not where we are as a community. Now, do I think that somebody's gonna buy a lot in the Highlands and do a duplex by right? No. But I, you know, you don't know what the ramifications of a lot of this stuff is, and I think it's important for us to stay. It would have to be because the whole point is to make.
But are they gonna get the right deed restriction? Think how hard we've worked on our deed restrictions. This is local rules.
Front range, I can say, I get it. You know, I get it. There's some big areas where they could probably. Crank out a bunch of stuff, but you're talking about one off stuff here. All the big portions of land are really owned by us at this point. Um I I want to, I want to be supportive of their efforts. But I also want to be protective of the efforts that we've made. I said to him, we've built fifteen hundred units. You know, for a town of five thousand people, that's it. That's a lot of units, even though it hasn't. Met our demand, we are still constantly building units. I went through all of our programs with them. The buy down stuff and at the end, I pretty much said, if you want to help some of the smaller rural ski town communities. You have to come up with things like funding for airport road. That's where we're gonna have trouble now. We want to build a hundred more units out there. But we can't until we put eight million dollars into airport road. And they said, well, there's plenty of funds available. Said, you just turned us down for a for funding, for planning, for transit. So they're available, but that doesn't mean you get them. You really should fast track communities like ours that are really making an effort. For those things that will impact that, you know, transit's very important to us. That transit money should be much easier for us to acquire. Road and road and infrastructure should be much easier for us to acquire. So it was a good conversation. They were really, I really enjoyed, you know, having this discussion with them. Um and then right after that, we got the invitation to the state of the state. So I I think they, I think they heard. I think they heard us, so.
And C M L uh will will fight tooth and nail because of this whole preemption thing. Um and just so you know, Kirsten is now gonna be our representative from the town for on the C M L legislative. Committee, so she'll be working on all that stuff more in depth at that level.
So there's your briefing.
Nice job, Eric. I mean, I think we need to fight for local control.
This is governor is pretty passionate about. He wants to do something.
Fact that we're gonna get some FaceTime with him on Tuesday, I think is important, the more. The more of us that go down. Now, I don't know that the county totally agrees with our stance on this. When we talked about this at Mayor's Advantageers.
Hey, I yeah, prob maybe I, who knows?
I I don't know where they are. They didn't.
Just may write a letter to.
They didn't come out and say, that's great. The towns all did. The towns all thought. Great job, but the county may have some different feelings on some of this stuff, but um. I I think we stay on it, so.
Yeah, and if Cass wants to weigh in, probably earlier is better to get in front.
Uh they're having a the housing committee, Cass Housing Committee meeting, I believe is meeting this week. And so they're gonna raise it and hopefully uh. It'll happen.
One thing to keep in mind is that. You know, the state legislature's opening day was yesterday, but there's no bill that's been introduced. So this thing is gonna morph and they're cutting C M L out of the conversation right now. So. While we think it's these things, it's gonna change before a bill actually is introduced.
Do we know who he's working with? Who are the leaders in in Congress?
He's been talking to McCluskey about it. And she she knew about pretty much everything we were talking about, but was interested, I think, to hear our opinion. Of of some of these things. Because you know, from a broad, like thirty thousand foot view, wow, what a great idea. These are some great ideas. ADUs by right, I think is a great idea. Just to in a lot of towns where they don't allow them. But then I did mention to them. Who's gonna, who's gonna monitor these? What what's keeping? What's keeping the owner of the A D U from just using that as a an increase to value to the property? And then grandma's living there. And they were like, oh, we didn't think about that. Like, well, we talk about this all the time because. That's what we do. So you know, at the end again, I reiterated. Yeah, call me.
And if they don't get that deed restriction right, it's gonna be useless.
Gonna be useless. So um yeah, I think I think we're. Positioned well to help shape this with what we've learned over twenty years, so. And with that.
Take a break.
Take a break and have dinner and uh back at seven.
Hopefully a quick one.
It's Golden Globes night. Paul to order the town council regular meeting for January tenth, twenty twenty three. Seven P M. Call to order and roll call, please.
Ms. Owens. Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Ms. Sade.
Here.
Mr. Beckerman.
Present.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Here. Uh minutes for December thirteen, twenty twenty two. Anybody got any problems? Minute stand is presented. Agenda, Rick?
No changes.
Agenda stands is presented. Uh communications council, we start with public comment, non agenda items only. Moving a timeline. Anyone from the public here this evening, other than you fine folks? Public hearing is closed or public comment period is closed. Uh Breck Film Eclipse Theater update. Uh it's Golden Globes night. Why don't you guys at home watch TV? Get me out of here so I can go home, watch some Golden Globes. Love the Globes.
Okay, I'll be quick. Hi, I'm Steve Mose. I'm the executive director for Breck Film and uh. I last met with you on September thirteenth, when we gave you um an update. On the state of the eclipse and asked for your support. Um thank you uh to everyone for the financial assistance grant, both for the festival and for the eclipse theater. Uh we really appreciate it. And I wanted to give a quick update on the festival since we met right before that. Um it went well this year. We were at about seventy five percent of sales of two thousand nineteen. Uh that was up thirty percent from last year, but still then twenty five percent down from our high in two thousand nineteen. Um our festival pass sales though equal two thousand nineteen, so it was more just the single tickets, the walk up tickets. That were down quite a bit, like fifty percent. So that's a a focus area for us, but festival pass sales were there. Uh the interest was there, so we're looking forward to a great uh twenty twenty three. And just to just for just to note for later, the the sound system, there was an issue at the Riverwalk at the sound system on a few films. Where people were, the sound was poor on dialogue and and some people were complaining. Attendees and filmmakers, so we're looking to address that as well uh for next year. As far as the eclipse movie theater, um attendance is getting better, but it's still not consistent. It's really dependent. On the films available. We're really at the mercy of what film comes out. Um we showed forty six different films at the eclipse in two thousand and twenty two. Um having only one screen is a challenge as well, I'm finding out. As many films require two weeks exclusive. And so we have to make that call. Uh the bigger films are three weeks, like Black Panther. And then Avatar was unprecedented with four weeks. It was supposed to be a three week, so we're now starting week four. Of Avatar. So if you ever look at, you know, the the grosses go down. Usually by thirty to fifty percent every week. We, I think we're helped a little bit by having new people in town, but. We see that going down as well, but it's the game you have to play. You have to have that and make it upfront. And we did have a real good uh first couple of weeks. With Avatar. There are also a few films we couldn't get right away because of our single screen. So sometimes that hurts us. Uh the Fabelmans, the Steven Spielberg movie, uh Ticket to Paradise. Uh we were able to show a few weeks later. And A Man Called Otto, we were hoping to start on Friday and we couldn't get it. So now we're going to wait two more weeks. And you know, our audience, a lot of times will stay stick with us if we let them know it's coming in town here. So we just have to do that. So we're gonna be a couple of weeks late. On that new Tom Hanks movie. That's just kind of some of the challenges we run into. Um after a year plus of operations, increasing our marketing uh by a lot, uh strategic business decisions, we did do a full time layoff. Of a of a person. Uh the twenty twenty three budget right now shows a small amount in the black. Uh for the year in twenty twenty three. So we're being optimistic about that. Attendance trends, this fall was much better for ticket sales. Again, Black Panther and Avatar. Uh just real Avatar really did it for us those first couple of weeks. It was just great to see the place packed. Uh Connie White is our booking agent nationally for our films, and she said we were the top performing theater. Of all her clients for the first week of Avatar across the country. So we feel like. When the movie's there, people were able to find us and and get them in and and that everybody thinks the theater looks wonderful when they're coming in. And giving us feedback. Um we really improved our efforts on our website. We've been running daily ads in the newspaper. I don't know if you've seen that with a lot of buy one, get one frees, mentioned this ad. Uh social media newsletters, posters. Uh we have a great spot in the dining guide and also Mountain Town Magazine. We just got in at the last minute, which was great for us. So we're really, you know, posters around town, going around. Introducing myself to different businesses, just uh encouraging people to come. So we're doing everything we can, I think, on our end. But we're still at that mercy of of the film as as we see is as far as the uh marketing of it and the and the buzz about it. Uh for twenty twenty three. Uh it's a better forecast in the industry. Uh twenty twenty two ticket sales nationally are at sixty, we're at sixty five percent of twenty nineteen. So about exactly two thirds. They're expecting, they were hoping for a little better increase, but they're expecting a twelve percent increase. For twenty twenty three. So I get it up to seventy seven percent or so. So I think it's a little slower than they wanted. They were hoping like eighty, eighty five percent. But you never know until the films come out and there's a lot in the pipeline waiting to come out. So hopefully they're popular. Um so again, the films have to be strong to draw large crowds. We're very dependent. It's kind of a a good and a bad. But it's tough to be so dependent on the quality of the movie, but at least we know with Avatar and Black Panther, people will come if they're excited about the film. And we're still fighting some of those things like um two thirds of people surveyed after COVID love watching movies at home. So. Hopefully it doesn't just turn into where Hollywood is just funding the big blockbusters that you have to see on a big screen. And some of those mid range foreign films can still be available to the general public at a theater. Uh we've really done well lately with renting out the eclipse for private events. Or fundraisers, um Friends of Dillon Ranger District did a film festival. It was packed. And then that's able allows us to market it to all those people, Building Hope. Uh we had a late night comedy show Saturday night. Did anybody go to that? I guess it was close to a sellout. We had like our all time concessions night on a Friday night at nine o'clock show for comedy. So. They're already looking to book a couple more shows with us. Uh we had to adjust our film times a little bit, but it was worth. Doing that for what we got out of that that one night show. Uh Vale Resorts booked an event with us. Um being an ex teacher, Summit High School I reached out to and actually know Tim Ritter, the principal from my days in Loveland. And we're starting, we looked, we did an event with them on a on a Tuesday night for students only. With their parents for a five dollar ticket. And we're gonna start doing that once a month and and he's really excited about having that opportunity. We're gonna show some of the. Paul Kozlowski is the film teacher there. We're gonna show a couple of student films every night. And then watch a film that the students get to choose or market themselves. And so we're gonna start doing that once a month as well. So I'm really excited about that. And we also did the Soul Center fundraising event there too. So I think people are starting to find us and we're really trying to get the word out about the rentals. As well. Next Tuesday, uh Tar, hopefully you've heard of with Kate Blanchett, probably nominated for the Academy Award. Um that is next Tuesday on the seventeenth. Uh the movie begins at six, there's a happy hour, we're gonna start early at four thirty. And I heard there's not a council meeting, so your schedules are clear, right? Always it ends up being a conflict a lot of times, but we're promoting that with the N R O. And we're gonna have some panelists and a Q and A and some discussion afterwards. So that should just be a great. Night. We really did well with Weight of Gold a few months ago. And so we're getting back to our once a month Breck Film Society events. So we're being creative in our programming. Uh coming up in the spring, we're gonna do Oscar Shorts Week. Uh Jewish Film Festival, a Stephen King Festival. Mixing it up with top Hollywood releases coming up in the first half of twenty twenty three. We did old Halloween movies. We did some ski and snowboard films one week in the fall. We're really trying to just kind of play. In both sandboxes, so to speak, with those top box office films, but also doing some some really unique things for locals as well. So the jury's still out. On our viability uh to run the theater profitably, but we're confident we're doing everything we can. Right now, and we're trying our hardest to make the theater a success for the town. And a jewel for our community. So we welcome any suggestions or comments. You can direct them to me, Steve at Breck Film. me, Steve at Breckfilm.org, although I know you love talking to Gary too. That's okay. Meet me in person, a quick email. We want to know. Just want you to know how important the theater is to the town. And now we're ready for some questions, if you have anything.
Hey, who did you say booked Atlanta? LaHans Turner for the comedy show? Is that Building Hope?
Oh, no, that was a separate promoter. I can't even, I don't, I don't have, that was a separate private entity. Yeah. And he wants to do a couple more comedy shows.
Sold well?
Yeah, it was, it was nervous. They hardly had sold anything about a week and a half before, and then they promoted it hard. I didn't get the final numbers yet, but we were two thirds sold the day before the event already. And just looking at the concession numbers, it was pretty full. Now he wants to do a couple more shows. That was a really good, unique.
Friend of mine's girlfriend.
Okay. She good? Bunny on the YouTube video we had. You saw that?
Where do we find, I see the calendar in here, but like the thing that you mentioned on Tuesdays and on the calendar, where do you find the list of all the events that you are having?
So that's not, yeah, that's not on our movie calendar yet. Is that what you're saying? Tar's not? Tar's a special event. So we like, all our members get in for free and, and we do a lot of email and that sort of thing. Now we'll start cranking up the marketing on that for that Tuesday night. Yeah, I thought it was right on the homepage on the top. Yeah, it's right on the top of the Breckfilm.org. Yeah. Yeah, sometimes there's a little, sometimes there's some issues, though, about cross-promoting with Hollywood things. Like, we had to be careful with Avatar and the comedy show. So we basically had to redo our entire fourth week of, or third week of film times to accommodate that show. Because originally Avatar is only supposed to be three weeks and that. So we thought we would, that comedy show would be when a different film came out. And so we had to change our entire week's worth of shows to accommodate the comedy night, but it got paid off for us. But so you, there's just, it's not so simple as you can just do whatever you want besides the main films that you're booking. There's just a lot of rules and those sorts of things. But Avatar or Tar should be right at the top of the homepage.
Well, sort of. I mean, it's on, it's, if you know where to look, then yes.
It's not right on the top of the homepage? It's a huge banner ad right at the top.
Home page, yeah. Yeah, it's not there.
At Breckfilm.org? Is there like this afternoon?
You know.
Huge banner at the top and you can click on the banner. It says tickets right here.
Click on events and then Breck Film Society, then it takes you there. But if you just go to Breckfilm.org, then it take, it's the eclipse and click here to see what's on the eclipse. And then you click on that and that's.
Yeah, but that's. I guess we're talking about the main Breckfilm.org without going to the eclipse.
So is Tar, is Tar just a one-night thing?
Yeah.
Ah. It's a one-night special event.
I'll be there.
Exactly.
Very cool.
I'll look at it, Kelly. I checked it like five times today. So it's. But we don't, we don't usually put it on the eclipse homepage because that needs to be our avatar page. But if you go to Breckfilm.org only, then we have a banner right at the top with Tar there. And then you can get to our Breck Film Society page. We use a different ticketing system and everything.
You see the tar after two clicks off.
Yeah. Yeah, we use a separate ticketing system. It's just a whole, you have to use a separate ticketing system for the Hollywood films. And so we use our same system that we use with the film fest.
Are you able to track what percentage of your guests are local and what percentage are residents? Or I'm sorry, residents and I guess.
And we do that for the festival. We, I think we should run that for Avatar. If they buy with a credit card, we can check by zip code. So at least we could just do local zip code versus anything else and pull that pretty easy.
That's not hard to do.
Yeah, Cat, Cat, our theater manager, thought it was predominantly out of town people for sure, especially those first two weeks.
Got you. And so are you guys closed today and yesterday?
Monday and Tuesdays, yes.
But let's explain that real quick because we, we're essentially trying to keep one day a week open for other kinds of things. So on our schedule, I don't think that's something we want to probably just close for those tonight. Which it is to regular movies, but we're, those are the nights we're throwing in like the high school thing or, or Tar coming up. And then there's one night a week, we're just, just blowing it down right now because Monday is not too much.
Yeah.
But it also, and then there's been some weeks where we're able to get a couple of things and those, those two nights get filled up. But it's not for regular programming purposes.
Yeah, we did a couple extra shows on Monday. Yeah. Cause it was so busy, we, you know.
Steve, let me just, I was gonna say one thing to the council. Last year we were we were bleeding red ink in that. And things, we're not totally closed out for this year or that our calendar is physical. But we're gonna have a fairly substantial loss last year. Your, your grant and gonna be, you know, as a god saver, it really helps. We'll still have a fairly substantial loss last year. So that is what we now have to work on. The loss last year will be somewhat less coming going forward because we're not gonna have some recurring expenses for capital improvements. Like, those are done. What we're gonna do there is pretty well done for the time being and now we're that should, should help. So we'll keep you well informed about our how we're doing, but actually just with no surprises. I think we waited way too long coming in to see you last September. Should probably have been in the back of that year. Make sure you're totally in the loop on how your theater is doing and how we're operating.
Awesome.
I'm not much of a movie guy, but is Fandango still like the go-to place, like the open tables of movie theaters?
I mean, it's one of many.
It's one of many.
Yeah. You want to make a better connection with them because they go through Rotten Tomatoes too, which is where a lot of people look for reviews. But we get a ton of Google searches too. We've known, that's really, and we're upping our Google ads too, because we get nonprofit funding from Google. So that's where we see a lot of it coming in.
And X search results are fantastic.
Took two clicks.
Great job.
Steve mentioned that we had some sound problems at the Riverwalk last year. A lot of films in that building are just fine. When we did the Beatles movie or when the Bams guys come in, different kind of, you know, it's not acting work. Off or that kind of thing. Those come offline, but when you have a regular movie with conversation and you know, and some broken part, it's already here. There's a fairly inexpensive fix to that. Should we be talking to DCA about trying to, yeah.
Yes. Yep. Do that soon. Yeah, we'll have that conversation. They're aware of it.
Then they'll be talking to us.
Channels. All right. Any other questions? Keep it up.
Yeah, thanks.
Forgot to mention your place too. Thank you for the display board. Got that display board right down there. That's been huge, I think, for us too, especially with Avatar. So far, so.
Thanks for the time, guys.
Yeah, thanks. I should be thanking them.
Thanks, guys.
Alrighty, continued business. At the second reading, Council Bill number thirty-nine, series twenty twenty-two. This is a bill for an ordinance amending policy five A and policy five R pertaining to architectural compatibility, making conforming amendments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
Sarah Crump, planner two for the record. As stated, this is an amendment to policies five A and five R, which would establish a new materials matrix for exterior building materials in the land use and development code. It also precludes the use of metal, brick or stucco at one hundred percent of any facade, except for in the case of buildings with institutional uses, those can still be one hundred percent brick. The community development department is recommending that you pass this on second reading tonight. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on the second reading of Council Bill number thirty-nine? Public hearing is closed. Policy question. Is this series twenty twenty-two because it was, we started it last year? Cause that's what I thought.
Yes.
That's what I thought. Good question. Kelly would have missed that.
Oh, yeah. Is there a motion?
Yes, and second reading, a movie passed Council Bill number thirty-nine, series twenty twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record.
Second. Ooh, fighting for it. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have the second reading Council Bill number forty, series twenty twenty-two. This is a bill for an ordinance conforming policy twenty-four absolute to the workforce housing division administrative rules and regulations.
Mayor, Council. This is an ordinance that is trying to shift anything related to workforce housing, specifically deed restriction regulations into the workforce housing division regulations and administrative rules and regulations. There have been no changes since first reading. If you have any questions, let Lori know. Just kidding, or Mark.
Any questions?
No.
Anyone in the council, anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading of Council Bill number forty? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? A second reading will be passed Council Bill number forty, series twenty twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman. Ms. Owens. Ms. Sade. Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have the first reading Council Bill number one, series twenty twenty-three. Got that, Jeffrey? Bill for an ordinance amending chapter three of Title Four pertaining to alcohol takeout and delivery permit notification.
Mayor and Council, this ordinance would require Breckenridge liquor license holders who obtain a state alcohol takeaway and delivery permit to notify the town within ten days of receiving that permit.
Questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? On first reading, we pass Council Bill number one, series twenty twenty-three, the title which has been read into the record.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Mr. Bergeron. Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have one resolution this evening. It's resolution number one, series twenty twenty-three. This is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Summit County, Colorado, and the towns of Breckenridge, Frisco and Silverthorn, Colorado.
Mayor and Council, you have before you a resolution that would allow us to enter into an IGA with the county Frisco and Silverthorn to use combined opioid settlement funds to reduce opioid use in Summit County. As we've listed in the memo and all of the supporting documents, deaths from opioids have increased exponentially since twenty nineteen in Summit County and in Colorado. And we believe that combining our funds will provide more effective programming to reduce use and abuse of opioids and of fentanyl in our county. As a reminder, the council approved a resolution to enter into the Colorado MOU in October of twenty twenty-one. This MOU details how settlement funds will be spent. And the IGA that you have before you this evening provides additional detail on how the town of Breckenridge with our partners will work to utilize those funds to impact our county. The IGA also details the approved uses for the funds. It requires the creation of an advisory board similar to what we use for nicotine tax. And, excuse me, requires the county to produce annual report on how the funds were spent. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Yes. I move we pass resolution number one, series twenty twenty-three, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement with Summit County, Colorado, and the towns of Breckenridge, Frisco and Silverthorn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
Planning Commission decisions from the third of January. How about a twenty twenty-three call up? Anyone? Not yet, okay. With that, the planning commission decisions stand as presented. We have the report of the town manager and staff.
A couple of things real quick. So right now on the Chair Five development thing, there's a review period with the Forest Service. So BOSAC is gonna look at that and we'll probably put together a letter. We don't expect any opposition to that. But we'll have something for you to kind of at the next meeting, say you're good with it and we'll get that. And I think our deadline's the next day, the twenty-fifth, to get that submitted. If we're, if we don't have any issues on the Chair Five. A while back, you know, was it last meeting, maybe Hank Scott came in here talking about the issue around, you know, only paying when, when it's, you know, the owners have a place and they ran out of room and they should only pay for one room. And you know, we looked at that internally and we had some discussion to say, is there anything we, we could be doing from a you may recall that when we were looking at all this stuff that Kirsten shared with you out of the circuit court out of New Orleans, that decision that was made when you start tying decisions around licensing based on owner occupancy of a residence, that becomes problematic. And while we have a little bitty piece of that that allows for a twenty-one day exemption, it's so minor, we don't feel that it's problematic. If we start, oh, our concern is if we open that door and we start making other concessions for people to not have to pay the full price in that, that we run the risk of putting our ordinance at risk. And so our recommendation is that this is the way it is and this is, because there are other options. You know, they can long-term rent that and other things. So that's gonna be our reply back to him that. Right?
That was gonna be my other matter.
Good. We got rid of that.
You know, I mean, I'll, I'll defer to, you know, people who went to college. But yeah, I, 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 yeah, I, I, I see what you're saying. And I wouldn't want to put all we've done at risk. But it's just, you know, from, from anecdotal sense, it's just unfair, but.
Well, and, and we tried to look for a reasonable solution to address what, you know, probably could be twenty or thirty people that might fit into that. But it just, I think we have to listen to Kirsten on this one, and she could not advise us to go down that road in good faith.
Dude, I do not want to get on her bad side.
Too late. We looked at it and we'll follow. In addition to that, we did share with you an email from Bella. I want you to know the numbers are very preliminary right now. You'll see what hasn't been renewed in the zones one, two, and three. It's about a hundred and forty something. But forty-six of those are still resort units that haven't renewed. And they probably will. They work through it a little slower at times. The year before, we lost about a hundred licenses. So we expect we might lose a hundred again on this one. It's pretty
That'd be great.
sequential.
Yeah. This, Rick, if, if we wanted to talk about something other than that, like say some, some areas that that, that I, I think some people might think don't belong in the particular zone that they're in. Will that put our, if we, we look at that down the road, that put this whole thing in jeopardy?
No, I, I mean, that's a broad question, but we were talking about the Fifth Circuit decision that talked about tying the regulations to primary residency. But the other is, the answer is no, but I do still think you need to give it time before we.
They committed to member setting on this thing at least six months.
Yeah.
And then looking and because there are still some areas that we were gonna look at again. I don't know that the answers will be any easier, but I think, yeah, at some point this year, we're gonna, we're gonna open that can of worms up again.
I thought we were leaving until. When, when meetings am I missing now? What was it? What meetings should I be?
I'm fine with that.
You are.
I'm gonna be getting these, the knee replacement next week. So Shannon's gonna, and I'm gonna just kind of lay low for a week after that. So Shannon's gonna run the January twenty-fourth meeting, just so you know. If anybody is, wants to go to the Snow Sculptor Welcome Party at the Welcome party at the. Breck Nordic on the Monday before council, the twenty third. Let us know so we, they, the BTO would like to have RSVP just to know if we're gonna have four or five councils.
Want me to say anything? They usually do.
Probably, yeah. Shannon will go up there with you guys if you're, you know, we're gonna have a presence.
If they need me to come up, Sarah and I will go up.
So, any idea?
I replied.
Good, thank you. I accuse Kelly of not reading your emails solely to find out they weren't. Bad about that.
That's the twenty third you sent her?
Yes.
Alright. Thank you. Mayor and Council. Can we just revisit um the uh, the lift deal? Are we talking about that at BOSAC or no? Yeah, so what, so we're not gonna be talking about it. BOSAC is gonna be commenting to a letter to you guys. And then you're going to like give a synopsis of our opinions. I think, no, no, no. I just, cause when Rick was saying it, you know, Scott, like Scott just got all antsy. And like he just got out of a hot tub. So, you know, so what did we get wrong?
That we were going, we staff were going to try to draft that letter based on any feedback we received from BOSAC. Cause we already had a presentation. And then you all were just gonna kind of bless it as it came on the staff summary level. Cause the twenty third of January is the BOSAC meeting. We're really focused on the trails work plan and the signage work plan. Those are the two kind of big tasks. So we're gonna start a meeting early. And so the hope was that letter was gonna be kind of a quick. Moving through and then it'll go to council on the twenty fourth for a final kind of approval. Looks good. Um, I think the biggest concern that we see at this point is the drainage during construction. That it doesn't go in, there's a lot of sediment doesn't go into the um, you know, the, the catchment, the ponds below, basically.
Big one.
Cucumber. That's, that's the biggest red flag or concern that we have seen as staff or in the presentation that Jim tested. Does that help?
Yeah, I'm glad you cleared that up.
Well, I think we're trying to draft it before the meeting.
Email.
Yes.
You asked for opinion.
Yes.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm working on something.
Want to be clear, I, I don't think we're not gonna try to spend a lot of time on the twenty third.
For sure the case.
Of course. We had an MMC meeting, like I alluded to earlier. What else did we talk about other than? That was pretty much all we talked about was that piece and how mean we are to everybody.
We are gonna do a countywide noxious weed event on July eighth, so we'll work with them. They went countywide, tried to really do some stuff to address noxious weeds countywide.
We have not met since the last meeting.
Alright, uh tourism is that history or heritage as councilwoman.
I'm sorry about that.
Don't get them. It's a good time to have it.
And board members are super appreciative of being able to finish the Milne project.
Will you just let him know about that super quick two minute conversation Lucy had with Mike Shipley about?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, creative arts.
Got uh, on the desk here, kind of an update of what we've got going on here. The um, rest of winter, so seven events. Um, so yeah, check those out. Should be some good stuff coming from comedy to dance and a little country, a little pop. Um, and then Saturday, Saturday, January twenty first, there's a uh, Arts District Campus Crawl. So check that out, five to eight, couple of different activities going on there. So lots of good stuff over at BCA.
This is great. They used to be mander in orange. Watch how.
They're good. We're going to that.
Yeah.
You going?
I'm going. I have to check the prices.
Events.
Go there by myself. I'll get a good seat.
I do wanna add one thing. I wanted to know from this group. Um, if you had strong feelings about whether I could bring that Uler discussion. That we received an email about to the events committee. It's been requested that we move Uler from, or consider moving Uler. From December to spring.
I don't understand what was wrong with it this year. Was that lame?
That, I wasn't a part of it, but.
That was.
And, and the trade.
I saw the video.
You're the king. What do you think?
Um, I, that was law, that was before Stark was born. So, um. I, I thought it was reasonably well attended personally. I thought it was very fun. Um, it, yeah, I, I mean, I actually marched in the parade with the past royalty stuff. And seemed like a good crowd. I, hopefully I didn't get the, the police to annoyed when we would, we wouldn't go the right way. I, I was trying to crowl. I was with Bonnie and Connie in that crowd. They wouldn't listen. So.
Rephrase it. Does anyone have any big concerns as to why we shouldn't talk about if there's another good opportunity to have it? Because I do think there were some really good points in the letter about maybe um incorporating some younger people. Into some of our events and maybe this would be a good one to start that with. And maybe it's not. But I feel like this letter might be a good conversation piece for BEC.
Yeah, BEC slash BTO, yes. I mean, I, I know BEC's talked about it multiple times already and, and um. But yeah, it can never hurt to look at it again. But I think we, it needs to start with Lucy, in my opinion.
Yeah, and um Jay already forwarded it to Lucy, so she is aware. And she's also on the list, so.
Yep. I think from that email is a good reason why we don't do it in January.
Right.
Yeah, that, that's totally true. Okay. I'm gonna take that as a, it's okay to talk about it.
It's okay to talk about anything.
Yeah, exactly.
We're not gonna stop you from talking about it.
I don't know.
Um, there's, we had our first meeting in a while and uh, there was some big stuff going on. Uh, early childhood options is taking over tuition assistance uh, starting September first. And there's a, there's a lot of heartburn over that. Um, we're looking at.
Really?
The applications should be starting probably by March and that uh, some marketing by ECO will. Will begin. Um, you know, I guess there's a new rate card about the tuition assistance. And the average family AMI um, it looks like it's a hundred and eighteen percent. Which is about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year of family income. And of that, you know, last year there was fifty three on tuition assistance. This year there's only forty two at the moment, but that was mostly because of SBK. Um, they're thinking that those numbers are actually pretty much uh equivalent. Uh, I just thought a couple of things that were interesting was that, you know, out of the families that do get tuition assistance. Uh, thirty nine percent of them use it for five days a week. Uh, twenty three percent use it for four days a week, thirty four percent use it for three days a week. Um, with the new formula, only two families out of the whole thing uh kinda get left out. And um, those are both at a, the top range of the income level and they kinda got. Uh, phased out of that. Um, and then the formula, the new formula is based on a percentage of income. So, you know, on the low side, if you have one kid going one day a week, you know, it's five percent of income. Uh, is the, the tuition assistance. Uh, if you have two, conversely, on the other side, if you have two kids going at full time. Uh, you're at nineteen percent. So it's just kinda like, it, there, there's this range and there's a matrix that, that seems to make a lot of sense. Uh, we discussed what the future of the childcare advisory committee was gonna be. Should we be disbanded? Do we need to meet anymore? And uh, the thought process was that there's still a lot of things that we can discuss and we can work on for our community. Even though the town no longer um, holds the, the purse to the, to the um assistance. Uh, some of that is like capacity questions as, you know, Stillson and some of these other uh, Altavertie uh come online. Uh, workforce, after school care, equal access, uh, summer care and uh, support for the centers. So that's kinda where we're at right now. Uh, it's good news that um, all the centers are fully staffed. Uh, between ninety five and ninety eight percent. Uh, the biggest struggle, if there was one, is the preschool classrooms. That it's really hard to, to fill those right now. Uh, with the high ratios and the fact that there's so many other options. So. That's stuff we got.
Jay, good report. I would add uh, to the list of why it's important is um, is advocacy for. For um, locals childcare, childcare support. Um, and um, and then also just networking. Bringing all the centers together and giving them an opportunity to. Utilize some of the scale. I think it's hugely important that, that that organization, that, that committee stay.
And we felt the same way. And then, you know, there was, there was talk about, should we go to quarterly? And right now, uh, we're scheduled every other month. And uh, yeah, I think there's, I think we landed on the fact that. You know, let's keep it every other month. And if nothing's happening, then they can cancel it. Or there's nothing to discuss. So it's a good group in there.
Oh, the death of childcare. You know.
That's gonna be the summit daily lead.
You know what Eli Owen says? We always talk about like AMI and stuff. Um, and, and uh, I don't, I, you know, I don't think I have any concept. Of like, what the financial realities of someone that's like one eighteen of the AMI, you know, a family with two kids. I'd, I'd like to just maybe talk to some of you people sometime. Just getting an idea, you know, I have, you know, it just dawned on me the last meeting. I said, I don't have no kind of struggles. Uh, family that's making a hundred and twenty five thousand, twenty thousand a year with two kids. What they go through with, you know, mortgage payment, childcare, all that other stuff. And, you know, I'm just so much, so out of it. Financially. You know, so I'll, I'll talk to some. Yeah, I'll talk to somebody.
You're gay.
He's the new guy.
Yeah, it's, it's all you people. Carol and I, the only ones at a bar. Cause we took those hot tubs. I regret that. Changed everything for me.
Workforce housing. Mr. Rick and Mr. Carlton. Big Laurie just went over our last.
Social equity.
Uh, we had a meeting in December. We reappointed um Taj Greer as the chair. She's done.
Excellent.
Excellent job. Um, also, I don't know if we're all aware, but we have a new staff member, Mac Russo. And December was her first meeting with us. Um, and moving right along.
Awesome. Good job. Other matters.
Already did, yeah. Took a fork in mine. I had somebody um, talk to me about, um, and I talked to Shannon, the engineers today in our walkabout. But about the um, you know, what they keep seeing the steam rising from the parking structure while we're talking about outdoor heating and all. And Shannon gave me a great, oh, both of you guys gave me a great explanation. Um. You know, the, the, we're now, the sensors, you know, they sense moisture, they sense temperature. But Chan said they're really sensitive, particularly to temperature. So they're gonna kick on um, sooner than we might like. So we're doing it manually now and we're able to turn them off more. However, even if we have a long spell with no moisture. And it's getting cold, they'll occasionally circulate some through, some through it so that the slab doesn't completely go to uh. Atmospheric temperature. Cause then it takes too long to reheat it. So that made a lot of sense. And I think it, it's good for probably all of us to know that, cause people will ask. Yeah, someone asked me about it. I asked the guys, James, what is, at Iowa, a little, James said they're, we're running on coal right now. That's why it's so. Coal fired, coal fired heating system.
Rankin, you got anything?
Alright, me neither.
One other real quick one. Um, somebody also came to me and talked, talked about the uh. Stables parking lot up at the base peak eight. Um, and just how trashed it is. And who is responsible that? Is that the scary or is that BGB? But it's just, I have to agree, the few times I've gone in, it's just full of trash.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, and the lines are all super faded and um, it's just not very well. This doesn't represent us very well.
Cool. And with that.